Call this Baker County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. If you have a cell phone or anything that makes noise, please put it on silent or vibrate, please. And I've asked my friend to the left of me here, Mr. Mann, to do the prayer and Mr.
Glenn Patton.
Glenn Patton's going to do the pledge for us tonight. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to serve, to serve the people of our county and our community, the citizens and the taxpayers, Lord. Help us be wise in our decisions. Help us with discernment, Lord. Give us the wisdom we need to make decisions best for the people of this county and for this area. In God's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to our agenda. Does everyone have a chance to look at the agenda? Miss Sarah, is there any changes?
No, sir, there are none.
Commissioners have anything they need to change, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as stated.
I'll second.
Motion second, all those in favor.
Quick question on it. Quick question. Sarah, on the minutes, have we had a chance to review those, you and Kayla, to make sure we're good with the minutes that's been provided?
Yes, sir, we have.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anyone had a chance to look at approval of the consent agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead.
It's still in the agenda.
I jumped to the consent agenda, my apologies.
It's fine.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're moving to our next item on the agenda, which is our elected officials. I see, no. You can't hear? Can you hear now? My voice is not very good. I've been on the roof for two days and when I'm getting hot, I can hardly talk.
You don't think I don't get it by the roof?
No, just don't sing. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. Our elected officials, I see no one elected officials here. So we'll move on to public comment. I have Mr. Larry Porterfield. If anyone else wants to speak, if you would fit out of speaker guard, get it to Miss Sarah and she'll get it to me and I'll let you speak at appropriate time.
Larry Porterfield, Baker County Veterans Council, phone number nine seven, I don't know what the hell it is, nine oh four seven six nine two four four five, I guess. Want to let you know that today, we took two more picnic benches down to the lake down there. We purchased those for a cost of $500 from the Northeast Florida State Hospital. And I just want to see if you guys, this Baker County, which considers reimbursed us the council number for that $500, it's not going to break us one way or the other. But like I told Dan Masters in our trade, if you don't ask, you can't be told no. So I just want to know if you guys consider that. You don't have to go out now, but anyway, just something in the future. You got any questions, ask questions now. What I did, I put one on the only dock inside the shelter, inside the fence, that was, you know, didn't have one. I put one on the outside and I'm going to put it down with lag boats because I don't trust the season in Baker County. I don't really trust anybody. James Vinton, he's kind of on the hippie side of it. But that is just one thing, I just want to consider. And I say it's not going to break us one way or the other. So that's something there. And another thing, a lot of you know, I'm from Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, out there for 10 or 12 days first this month. And Broken Arrow, when I graduated, there was like 3,000 people in town. Of course, there's tons and tons. And right downtown Main Street, right in Main Street, they went in and bought out some small beds they marked and they put a five acre lake, five acre park strictly dedicated to veterans. And like I said, it cost over $200,000. I just wonder if with your folks' input, see the veterans, you know, we did the sheriff's memorial, it cost us over $25,000. I just wonder if you guys would consider some type of a small memorial, some type of a small statue for life of better words, monument, to consider having somebody design that and put it down to the lake, maybe out by or a play pole area. And you know, you guys designed, and you know, but I would ask you, if you do, to let a couple of us, you know, have some kind of input in it as to what it is. So again, those are the two items I wanted to bring for you. And just hash it out and let me know, all right?
And you said there was two picnic tables?
We put, yeah, we put two of them down there.
And that was $500?
The $500 we purchased, I don't have received my hand, Dan Masters had them, that we bought from the Northeast Florida State Hospital out there. We thought they were going to donate to us, but thinking and doing is two different things. As we all know. But anyway, I just, I want you guys to consider. And you know, and like I said, that memorial, just kind of think about that. Because you know, the only thing we have down there at the park that even references veterans is the one small granite stone we have right in front of the play pole. It's dedicated to all the veterans in Baker County. But I just wonder if some way we could maybe consider, or you guys could consider, something you know, like a little statue, maybe four or five foot tall, something like that. And just, you know, honor, not just honor all veterans, nothing about the Veterans Council, all veterans that served in Baker County.
There's Farman over here, so I know he's got something.
I'm sure I have a shorter issue, but I'm going to support the request for the picnic tables because it is going on the property for the public to use and so forth, so that's a reasonable request for that. I think the concept of a monument, I think that's something we need to think about through our budget process.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
But I will tell you, I think it's, I think it's something that we ought to seriously consider as we go through the process. We spend a tremendous amount of money for our parks and recreations. We spend a tremendous amount of money for ball fields for Little League. We spend a lot of it to recognize them with signings and things like that. And I think being able to do this, it is a public park, but it is good for us to recognize the veterans as well. But I think that's something that we would need to think through in our budgeting process as we do that. But for the immediate thing, I would be in support of helping with the payment of the picnic tables because it is for our parks and betterments. But Sarah, and I'm just going to make sure that we got the budget to be able to do that. What I don't want to do is start going through budget amendments, thanks.
I'm going to try and talk about that memorial just a minute. I'm going to get upset. Talking about all of the western Broken Arrow that got killed in Vietnam, two of my graduates were very good friends. And another portion of it recognized the 20 veterans from Broken Arrow that committed suicide since the war. And three of those were in my class. I'm sorry.
And since we're on that subject, question, Ms. Chairman, I want to take a minute to express the appreciation to the, I'm not sure exactly the correct name of the organization, I don't, it's the Women's political network. That does the flags out along between Glen St. Mary and...
I think the American Legion took that over.
American Legion?
American Legion took it over this year.
Okay, well whoever did it, American Legion.
They started it.
I want to, I want to take a minute and say again, it's very impressive. It has truly grown from when it originally started out at 228 with a few flags to where it is today. And I made that trip this week and turned in Glen and come this, and when I did, that's when I first saw it again this year. And it's very impressive and I appreciate what's being done for that, to recognize those that have served and continue to serve us in the country. So again, thank you, because that's a lot to put out and take back up and keep it running us, but thank you all very much for doing it.
Ma'am.
We've got Buck and Charlotte going, they started it, and they're still with us working on it. So they get the water, please.
They do a great job.
They first started that about six years ago, started in Fall Month.
Right.
Never like 40.
Right. And it's grown immensely.
Right now, there's 880.
Tremendous.
Wow. Miss Sarah, I'm going to support the reimbursement too, just make sure we got the funds and recreation budget to do that.
Yes, sir.
And also, I think the monument is a great idea, but it's out of the scope of anybody I know sitting on this board. I would recommend that the veterans and maybe get together with the American Legion and y'all come up with some type of a plan and then present that back to the board with a budgetary amount so we can kind of look at what it's going to cost to do that. It's not something that I want to take on because it's something, I'm not a veteran.
Yep.
And I think y'all would have more say in it than anybody sitting up on this board. So I would recommend that y'all get together and come up with some ideas and then we'll look at the costs on it. We go into budget start in June, so something you need to start working on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you need a third for the reimbursement, there you go.
Thank you, guys. We'll work on that.
And I don't have any other public comments, Ms. Sarah, so I'm going to move on to our new business, granted acceptance, Rule 911 grant, Mr. Blanchard.
I think you do have one walking up. Mr. Chairman, public comment?
No, no, not yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith.
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity in order this time to address the board. First item on Director Blanchard's presentation is a request for acceptance of the 911 grant. This discussed at the last meeting, in the amount of $11,364.12. This is a recurring grant.
Yes. This is on the service agreement for the E-911 system annually. Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is something we get every year.
Yes, sir. And no county match required.
No county match.
Correct.
What's the pleasure to board?
It'd be a pleasure to accept $11,364.12 as a motion.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're in the emergency management update.
Yes, sir. And so, did you ask something, Mr. Bennett? In front of you, you have a list. It's going to be fairly short, sweet, I have a few updates. So we'll take a look at the county wide roads. We're very close to submitting that, that project, it's still in, in fact, I think you just let me know that we're, today, we finally got some, some final numbers to present to FEMA. The boat ramp, 796550, that project today got sent back down to the county from the, what's called the CRC. And basically, we're just realigning. FEMA's given us some information and now we're giving the county an opportunity to come back again, all part of that PDMG, the program manager replacement that we went through 14, 16 days ago. Part of that process, they were basically taking a second look at all of our projects because the funding was so far off in the FEMA numbers. 796552...
Do you got a, let me interrupt you real quick. You got a timeline or anything on that one?
So...
Hard to put a timeline to it?
It starts with the RFPs coming back on the 29th. I can give you the ultimate timeline, those projects need to be completed by February 2026, to make sure that's not what you're looking for.
When you say completed, the work means it has to be done by then too?
Yes, sir. That's now. There may be, there are opportunities, once the project gets through, much farther in this process than we are now, there's opportunities to extend that. And it also has to do with the ultimate money and whether or not it reaches that large project threshold that we've kind of talked about. But that is the anticipation. Truthfully, they don't happen that fast. It's a slow process. For direct answer to your question, I can't give you a hard number. I will say this, which is, you're also not going to want to hear. So I was going to cover this at the DM, but I'm going to cover it now since you've addressed it. And that is, FDM, Florida Department of Emergency Management, this week started raising some concerns and is considering the option of rescinding the RFPs and then not submitting them out for bid until the entire FEMA process is signed off on. We have received guidance from Thomas Howland Ferguson that doesn't necessarily line up with that. And Thomas Howland Ferguson very specifically addressed your concern. And the board's concerned that we want to get these projects going, we want to get them moving, we want to get the boat ramp back open, all of those things. There's still a bit of a bottleneck, right, with the FEMA process, but we're right now maintaining the course and still waiting. There may be at some point, because FDM has to sign off on these projects because they're ultimately who gives us the money. And so they're like the last kind of step before obligation happens. So we're going to need their approval at some point. But right now, as it stands, we're leaving the RFPs out there, they're due back on the 29th. And so that's the best I can tell you as far as a timeframe, barring anything going sideways and us having to resubmit those RFPs. And the real concern there, the scope of works have to match very clearly. One of the things we did in that process was we gave the contractors two options, rebuild it where, you know, where it is or like it was, and then improve it to make it more resilient or to lessen the likelihood that we have another loss, you know, sooner down the road.
Right.
So I hope I answered your question as best I can.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Just clarify real quick, is it, if this one goes through, I'm just talking about the boat ramp specifically, if it gets approved and everything else, does all of them have to be approved before you start on that?
No.
It's each individual one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So any other questions?
One quick question on that, who's doing the RFP? We're doing the RFP?
We've already done it.
But we're handling the process.
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear on that.
Any other questions? So Shoals Beach, this project as well may very well get kicked back down to the county. It's being priced out, they came in again at less than 50%. It's actually beneficial for us that these projects are being kicked back to us because we're literally able to now go back, that first PDMG, there was such a disconnect in expressing to FEMA what our expectations were and our wishes were from the county perspective, that now we're able to actually kind of go back and start from scratch and we're making sure that they're very closely aligned and that the scope of works that are included in the RFP are very closely aligned so that we don't have those discrepancies that FDM was concerned that may pop up at some point. So I don't have any changes to those numbers yet, but we are running those back through the process. Turner Cemetery Bridge is, has been returned to us as well. And FEMA has made the decision that going back to a wooden bridge isn't possible because of code reasons. So that now removes that, that option, which wasn't our option, preferred option, but that now removes it. So they've asked us to come back, remove that option, and essentially the option is going to be rebuild a bridge there that's going to be something other than wood, which is exponentially expensive, or the concrete covert, and we think that's really going to be beneficial for the county to move forward what was our ultimate choice.
So Dennis, let me ask you a question. Sarah, these are being advertised now, correct?
Correct. They were optional, so...
But can't we do an addenda now to remove that option so it's no longer an option so you don't have to start over?
We can. If the, if the bridge, wooden bridge replacement needs to be removed, we can.
Well, any, any of these that have options that we are knowing is not going to be an option for this process, do the addenda, remove them from options and it's one less potential thing, one that they've got to spend time to try to bid on it, because I know you'll spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to bid stuff, so take them out of the equation.
Yes, sir.
And two, it cleans up the advertisement so it's less likely to have an objections from FDAM.
I would agree with that. And essentially what Ernst &amp; Young, the state's contractor advised was, that's kind of what their thinking was, rather than do this two or three times, when the scope of work is actually signed off on by FDM and by FEMA, there won't be any question. And so there was a potential there from FDM and Ernst &amp; Young's position that if something, if something in FEMA's process, right, went outside of what our intended scope of work was, we'd have to then resubmit that anyway. So rather than doing that midstream, they recommend doing it once everything is finalized by the state and by the feds.
Yeah, and Dennis, I hear what you're saying and agree. Here's where I have a little bit of a challenge with that process. They'll tell us to stop everything, to go through this process, and then they'll tell us hurry up because we're not giving you any more time to do it. So it really puts you in a really difficult situation to do it. So most of my suggestions, trying to find a way to help compromise that meets everybody's objectives, because while they're telling you, you need to stop and, or suggesting that you consider stopping and restarting, they also haven't told you you've got more time besides February 2026, so that's a challenge.
Exact same conversation I had with FDM and with FEMA and with our consultants today. And again, their position is we put the RFPs out early. There were two very specific reasons why we did that. One was to get that process going, permitting and all that, which we already talked about, those delays. But more importantly was the numbers were so far off at FEMA, they weren't trusting. So we, we were advised, give them more than one estimate, right? Give them, give them actually quotes. And that way, hopefully they'll recognize that their numbers are 50% off. So I 100% agree with you and we feel that pinch point every day, Commissioner. So let's go on to Steel Bridge Road. So this is good news to report back to the board. So that project originally was $685,000 as we proposed it. With the new PDMG and the new process, that actually has already been calculated by the CRC and came back at 1.9 million dollars. We were notified today, that number's actually going to go up a little bit more. It doesn't really change things on our side, except it does demonstrate that the 50% of that that they had originally proposed was definitely way outside of what we expected. But there were some additional cost increases that they identified today, they informed us, I think there's going to be an additional 20,000 or so that they're anticipating raising that, their calculations from the CRC. The Copper Creek, so good news to report on that as well. So this week, Chris was able to get from the, a quote in a scope of work, from the contractor who came in after Irma and had identified those damages, to go back in and specify, okay, today versus what I saw back then after Irma, and to be able to quantify that very specific Debbie damage, that number right now is about $141,000, 145,000? Thank you, Chris. $145,000. So where FEMA had already cost that out of 73,000 was all we were going to be eligible for, that number now is going back to them at 145,000. So it's about double where we were the last time we reported to the board. And again, it would be 87.5% of that 145.
Dennis, on that one, just to be clear, if, when we go out to do the work, we're going to do all the work that's necessary for that box covert, there's just only a component of it that is eligible for the reimbursement for this particular funding, but we're going to do all the work to bring that box covert and make it good. I just...
Yes, sir. And it's going to require, in fact, I'm not sure that we've ever done this at the county level, but it's going to require some very specific tracking, not only on the portions of work and the things that were covered by the scope of work for Debbie, but also how that thing bills out, because it's going to be a very, it's going to be a portion of the total that FEMA's going to be reimbursing for.
Just to clarify, we, is that us or subcontractor?
Contract.
Contract, okay.
Yeah. Baker County's going to be responsible for making sure it happens.
Right, okay. I just, I didn't know if our road department was doing that or if we were submitting that up. Okay. Thank you.
And so, again, the 801416 is obligated, nothing is changing that, hopefully checks made. I truthfully do don't know. The covert project, so...
So that's, that's saying they're paying for that one?
That says the money has been cleared to be sent to the county and then at some point, the county will get a check. And we're not involved in that part, we'd be the finance side of it there. So, and that should have been for 67.
Yeah, it would have been for 67.
So the, the covert, so this, as we referenced, we had to split the coverts off and so, literally this evening, just before I got here, that project got kicked back to us. We think it was just a, we think they missed a page in the, in the documentation that was submitted, it was a very large spreadsheet with 15 tabs on it, and we think they just missed a tab. We're fairly confident that there shouldn't be any issues there. And that, that project total for the, for what we're applying for the, or what we're submitting for the coverts is $27,599. So that's on top of the previous 73,000. So we're ultimately going to give a significant amount of money, hopefully, back from FEMA, reimbursed for all of that work we did on all of those projects. The next page you have in front of you is the cat B, this is the, in fact, we've been kind of going back and forth about getting all the documentation from Hurricane Helene, and we finally think we've got everything nailed down. That amount is, that we should be submitting in the next three days will be for $46,203.33. So that brings you up to speed with where we are.
Dennis, you should be the remote up there, if you don't mind, just advancing it to the...
I was trying to touch it, it didn't do anything.
Yeah. There you go. Now they can see it.
Okay, there, little delay there. It's slower than I am. So now, I've covered already, do you have any questions on the RFP process and kind of where we are? We'll be back before the board before any decisions are made one way or the other. And right now, we're listening to two contracted companies who have differing opinions and we're just kind of waiting to see. And hopefully, the RFPs come back at the same time and make us all this a report. With that, the last update I'd like to have, and specifically, Colleen Rodriguez is here from Jewish families and community services to specifically address, and I'm not sure if the entire board's aware, but we received a call from Sarah, who received a call from Commissioner Mann, about one of our residents that was absolutely destitute. And so I'm going to let Colleen kind of step up because they handle this from the nonprofit side and from the NGO side, so we're more like, hey, air traffic control, but they're the folks doing the work.
Hi, good evening, nice to see you again.
Good evening, thank you for being here.
I'm actually going to give you a couple of updates because I've gotten a lot of calls from the commissioner's office in the last couple of weeks, some through the Baker Sheriff's Office and then some directly through emails from some of you. And so, yes, one of you was contacted specifically about an individual that was residing behind the Wind Dixie. And so FEMA and JFCS were able to make contact with her, we reassessed her, she absolutely was eligible for FEMA. When we were here a month ago, we said we were worried that there were people that fell through the cracks, we didn't know where they were, that they were eligible for dollars and what happened to them. So she absolutely was one of the ones that fell through the cracks. We also were willing, are able to work with an organization called Changing Homelessness that is based in Duval County, but does have dollars allocated for Baker County. So between Jewish family, Changing Homelessness and FEMA, we are, she's stable in the hotel right now. We have provided food and clothing for her. We are developing a life plan for her, a stabilization plan. She will get, not a lot of money, but she will get a chunk of money from FEMA and we want to make sure we don't end up, I'm not back here in a month saying she's right back where she started from. Now, to be completely honest, when we found her, she was residing behind the Wind Dixie in a shed that did not have electricity or water and she was not living alone. There were several other people there with her. And so as part of meeting with her, we did meet with those residents as well. So some of them also may be eligible post-storm, some of them are in the homeless population that are eligible for Changing Homelessness dollars. We did assessments on all of them. For the short term, they are in the travel lodge, we were able to relocate them, we gave them food, we gave them clothing, we gave them water. One of them is pretty significantly disabled and so we are researching, I really feel I really feel like she needs to be in a nursing home. She is not able to be self-sufficient. So that, that all came as part of that first initial referral. The next one was Fraser Hospital. We have built a relationship with them. They had a single mother with two children in a very, they were living behind the Wendy's. And so we were able to meet with her. Changing Homelessness has now housed her for a month, for the entire month of May in the Travelodge. We are now providing case management. We clothe those children, we're getting them re-enrolled in school, we're getting them food. So all of that is happening with these families, but what I'm trying to tell you is that there is one that's calling you. And I know several of you called this week and said there's these people. When we find one, we're finding groups of them. So we were contacted by Lydia. Are you Lydia?
Lydia.
Nope, Lydia? Okay, Lydia, you contacted me about a family in Sanderson? Okay, so they are not, I'm not going to share confidential information. We are working with them. We might be able to solve some of their issues. We're in conversation with them. FEMA may be able to help them, we may be able to help them as well. So I'm limited in what I can share with you, but one call is, I'm telling you, linking us to several others. When I went to the Travelodge on Friday with four bags of food and clothing, I met many people there. So the good news, though, I would have some positive updates for you as well, is that Changing Homelessness has heard our plea, and my, I call it gentle nudging. Dennis knows I'm not necessarily a gentle nudger, but my gentle nudging, they have agreed that they will allocate some money to Jewish family to provide case management and financial assistance to the homeless population and post-storm victims that you have that qualify in Baker County. We are working on what that MOU looks like and how much money that will be. Today, we were awarded $125,000 from an organization called Women's Giving Alliance for us to be able to provide in-home domestic violence services for women and children in Baker County. And Mayo Foundation, Mayo Hospital Foundation also gave us dollars that we're going to be able to provide some mental health services, both psychiatric and therapeutic, for Baker County residents. Today, I was contacted by someone in Baker County about a 15-year-old rape victim, and we were able to get her services today for her therapeutic services. So I know I'm coming before you, and I'm saying you call me about one, and then I sign five, and there's all of that, but we're starting to see some movement, and we're starting to see some energy around the dollars that should be here, the dollars that could be here, and we're working with those families. They're all getting food, they're all getting clothing, and we're going to continue to work with them. And I thank the Sheriff's Office profusely, who's keeping us in contact. And I thank you. When you get the call, you call us. Can Jewish families solve every problem? I cannot, but we're starting to get some energy around it, and I think it's pretty good progress for being here four months, and I'm open to questions.
I'd like to have a question.
Quick, effective response. Thank you for your quick and effective response.
Yeah, I just, I want to say the same thing. Thank you very much. This is one of those things that sometimes people say, there's nothing I can do. A simple phone call can certainly change some people's lives. And when I hear the stories of these people staying in the shed, no water, nothing else, and now.
And paying rent, paying rent for it.
It's not very long, but listen, a month of a place to live and eat, that can be huge, and it can be life-changing. So again, it's great news to hear that others have contributed some of those. Fantastic. We appreciate the work that y'all do, because it really does make a difference to folks. So thank you very much for doing it here in Baker County.
We're happy.
Thank you.
So to finish up, Commissioner Mann, you were linked in on several of those emails. And I hope that you'll share, I didn't include that we're very limited in what we can do. Colleen is right about the person identified, but I think if you read that and see the struggle that we're having to get Baker County's folks represented and get the necessary information from FEMA, I would hope that you would share that information with the other commissioners, and also recognize how hard we're fighting for our citizens to get them to do the right thing. And I will say that the speed with which having somebody actually here, call it plain in our sandbox, but having Colleen and Jewish families in our sandbox, literally making phone calls, it's minutes, and not hours or days before we're able to get answers and responses, you know, for the citizens we have in need. So with that, that's my update. I got out of here on time, Chairman.
I was very impressed with the response time. I got the call, I called Sarah, and by the end of that day, things were happening, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denny.
Item on the agenda, which is approval of ship change order. Ms. Lydia?
You want to give it a try tonight?
No, I'm not. I've been in Haiti, and they have a lot of mangoes. That's what I would call you.
One of these days, you're not going to say that.
You just did without doing it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm coming to you this evening. The ship program is an ever-evolving program, and I'm coming to you to ensure that we continue proper transparency. Prior to this evening, staff has been following the county purchasing policy with regards to any change orders of nominal amounts that are like less than $3,000, meaning only county manager approval was being sought, which she also happens to be my department head. While this has not been a problem, and ship has passed all of their monitorings without issue, because these are grant funds and to provide further transparency, I'm going to start coming to you guys with these smaller trivial dollar amounts. So before you this evening, I have a change order for an additional $180.05. This is on the project located on Eastwood Drive. It is to extend out the rental of the pod for an additional month. Somehow, and that's my fault, when I did the math on how many months it would physically be there, I dropped a month. So it is not an extension from the contractor requesting a longer time as of yet. He says he's meeting his deadlines, so.
Is that it?
That's it for that.
Move to approve change order for the $180.05 as requested.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
And that also includes the, didn't you also have it in here, adjust the existing maximum award limit waiver amount to reflect the additional changes?
I have to wait for you to approve the change order.
Okay, I approve, my motion's for the first one, go.
All right.
Y'all don't make it hard on me tonight.
I was trying to make it easy and do it at once. I was trying to do it at once, that's.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, okay.
Now, there is an approval for a waiver to adjust the waiver that y'all provided before on this project. Including this change order and a change order of $134 for moving the pod, now brings the total to $140,576.25.
Motion to approve the maximum award limit to $140,576.25.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number four, we're looking at approval of change orders for the extension office. Ms. Alicia?
Good evening. So you should have two attachments. I'm seeking approval of two change orders for our reconstruction or renovation of the Ag Center. I had them break it out into two, just so we could see prices. The first one is, you'll see quite a bit of random things. We're just trying to make sure that the office doesn't look piecemeal, fixing one thing, not another. And then the other, the second one is for new windows throughout.
Great idea.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Just for the record, we want to make sure we read in that the extra improvement number two totals $29,447.92. And that's for the various items that you see listed there on the page. And extra improvement number three is $9,465.75, and that's to replace the existing, or the rest of the windows.
Do we know when this work's going to be finished?
We've requested a second extension, so we have until June 30th of 2026. But it should be finished before then.
An entire year?
Our deadline was June 30th of this year, so, and we were not going to make that deadline, so I had to extend the deadline.
But an entire year?
It won't take an entire, that's the only amount of extensions that they give. I think the contractor is pretty close to being done, actually. I mean, they're just a few months. They're just a few months shy of being complete.
Okay, we can give the time, just as long as you don't try to take it all.
Correct, yeah.
If I'll just stop asking for more, then we'll probably be there.
Where's the funds coming from?
Grant funds, 100%.
Is there grant funds left after this?
Yes, sir.
There is.
How much?
We have about $69,000 unspent.
After these two changes?
After these, yes. And I've already gotten approval that we can get reimbursed for technology expenses for the new classroom, but I'm not sure what else we might come up with, so.
So what she said, she'll be back again?
Yeah.
So she might need the year?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
What's the pay award?
You got to do two on us?
We can do one command.
Just in the total amount?
Yeah, because it's for the same contractor, that would be fine.
Just approval of your contract, for the contract.
You can do approval of extra improvement number two and number three.
I'm making motion to approve change order one and two in the amount of $38,913.67. Come on.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Time for another one, this. Number five, Resolution 2025-08 Budget Amendment. Ms. Ruiz?
Good evening.
How are you?
Good night.
Wonderful. It's been a long time since I've been up here, Sarah. It's a pleasure. I am proposing Budget Amendment Resolution 2025-08. What this is proposing is to close out our fiscal year 2024. This will also help the closure of our 2024 audit. This is when we spoke to the CPAs yesterday. This is what they're waiting on, are these final budget amendments, and then I can submit all reports. And we're going to be rocking and rolling on finishing up the budget. So I've presented a couple of sheets in your packet. The first one is just a summary. The last column is the needed dollar amounts to be adjusted. The next couple of pages, which are a little more colorful, that just shows you all your funds and revenues and expenses. I can briefly go over each line item on your summary, if you shall choose. If you don't mind, I will do that.
I'll be gone.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The top one is Fund 001. That is your general fund. Basically, what I'm asking for is a budget amendment on revenue. We had received more add-the-lorn taxes, more delinquent taxes, more local communication taxes. We received more budget building permits, and we received more interest. So basically, that is to true up our revenue for 2024. Next line item is Department 105. That is our fire department. I have to true up our expenses of $63,000. We went over a little bit on department overtime, which goes over on your FRS calculation and your vehicle repairs and maintenance of $63,000. So I am treeing up that amount.
Cheryl, I'll run it for me.
Sharon?
Cheryl, just walk me through that line particularly, for example. It shows the revenue was $1,578,253.
Yes, sir.
But it shows the actual revenue was only $978,868.
Correct.
So we're showing almost a $600,000 reduction in revenue.
Correct.
Where did that revenue come from? Where was it budgeted to come from?
It's going to come from our FEMA SAFER grant and the FEMA, I've got it in here, the paramedicine vehicle. We're actually, the good news is getting those funds this year, in 2025. In fact, we have gotten them. So that will all be trued up in 2025.
So.
That's carried over as a liability in your books, and then you true it up in '25.
So that funds will be coming in '25?
It's already here.
It's already here.
Yes, sir.
But it'll be.
It'll balance out in '25.
It's on the '24, '25 books.
Okay.
That's correct.
So since this rolled them forward into current year, have we done a budget amendment in current year to raise the amount of revenue that we have so that we have the authority to spend it? Because we had the expense last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
So help me to understand why that particular one also doesn't show up as a, if we had the expense and we incurred the expense, why don't we have a $600,000 shortfall in expenses, or an over expenditure in expenses if we, well, we expended and it was budgeted, we just didn't get the money?
The one thing that I got wrote up on, and just to rehash, is your accrual method. This is operating off a cash method. Once I go into accrual method, I'm doing accounts receivable to true that up. And then this year, I offset that. But we have not lost revenue in that fund.
But we had to, we had to pay out expenses, we had to pay out county dollars that wasn't originally planned to be expended as county dollars. It was originally expected to receive the state dollars, the SAFER, whatever, is it SAFER state or federal?
It's FEMA.
Is it state? So we were scheduled to have that revenue come in and spend state revenue, but instead, we've had to spend county revenue for that.
And then get reimbursed?
That's correct.
Which is basically the same thing we do on roads, ain't it?
That's correct.
It's the same process.
That's a lot of these grants. We spend the money upfront.
And then we get reimbursed.
And we get reimbursed.
And I see that a lot on road and bridge.
And then what we are required to do is.
All state grants are reimbursable, but the issue that I'm trying to understand is, we had in current year, was there a particular reason why we didn't get reimbursed in that year? In the fiscal year that we expended the funds that was programmed?
There are a lot of reasons why we don't with FEMA. It takes a while for FEMA, and they gave 100% back just last week.
So, but this, is this the first year of the grant, second year or third year?
This is the final, and the third year.
So we've done it two years previously, and they've paid. So it wasn't a new grant, it was something, not anything new?
No, I had to accrue for it. And that's one thing we've always come to you with the budget stating, your labor, your overtime is all being accrued for, because it looked like a shortfall every time I present a budget. And I said, but anticipate you're going to get your FEMA grant.
Is the $600,000 the total amount we got for the three years, or is that an annual amount?
It's 300 and something thousand a year. You got $983,000 back last week for three years.
So we front the money for three years, and then you reimburse all of it once?
Yes, sir.
They don't reimburse us yearly? Or not?
They do not anticipate that, and they had a lot of turnover, and there was a lot of communication issues. However, they got everything straight.
Is they, they be in FEMA? And when you said they had a lot of turnover, you're talking about FEMA had turnover rate?
Yes. And at the time, last year, communicated with the county manager and everything, showed all these documents, we're, did all these phone calls, tried to get ahold of their supervisors and everything else. But this past two months, Trevor Nelson, the chief, and I have been really on top of that.
Did we make some middles to them, and they just didn't pay us?
Oh, yes. That's correct.
So we made all kinds of middles, and they're just not reimbursing us?
They didn't reimburse. There were some that were accepted, some that were rejected. And you could go online and look at the history about this.
Okay, so again, back to this. I just want to understand the roads, and I didn't pick them. So we show them we had a shortfall in actual revenues, but that's going to come in. It'll have it in '25, which should, in '25, we should actually have actual revenues be $600,000 above what was expected?
Oh, no, because I've been accumulating for three years, so it's going to come out at $983,000.
So that will show up in, as an overage in current year? For the 20, for the current year, the '24, '25 year, now that we finally got the money, it will, will we have, and when we do the reconciliation next year?
It'll wash it out. We took money from the general fund to compensate for the fire. I had to do an accrual in the general fund to say we are going to get reimbursed. And now we're getting reimbursed, so that will wash that up all out.
Okay. So if we come on across, we had a certain level of expenses, we actually went over expenses by sixty-three thousand.
That's correct.
So help me understand, every time we come before this board and we ask for an expenditure, we asked and we told they have budgets. So how do we spend sixty-three thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted?
Two of these line items are the biggest ones, and I think if, I'm not mistaken, the chief has described all year long that they are shorthanded, they've needed overtime, they've had shortness of vehicles. So these are overtime, the overtime line is the only one, and then FRS calculation on the overtime.
So this is all employee-related?
Most of it, yes, sir. There was only thirty-something thousand for just a truck repair and maintenance.
Okay. But again, I come back to the point, to every time we get something before us for approval. I get overtime may not be something that you can track every time, but there should be a clear understanding of how much budget we'll have available for each individual project and repairs and everything every single time. So that when it comes before the board, we know if we have budget or not, because if not, we should be doing amendment before we approve it. I mean, so if it's not, if it's not the personnel side, that concerns me that we're approving expenditures without budget. Okay, I understand what we've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the way we're doing it right now, if we look at grants receivable, it may not be accurate until we do the budget amendments.
Yes, if I understand your question correctly.
If we looked at, if we pulled a balance sheet right now, looked at grant receivable, it may not be accurate because you haven't done the adjustments. If we looked at it last year, at any given point and looked at grants receivable, it is not the true indication of what grants are to come to this county.
That's correct. And with twenty twenty-five, there's been all kinds of grants and adjustments that have been done this year. Those have not been in the budget. Because what I have to do is, since I haven't been forewarned before a budget or before a meeting, I have to go back and reread the minutes, go read the whole package, and then I have to come in front of you for a budget amendment.
Okay.
If I may, I understand that we've had two firefighters called up in military, creating a situation where we had excessive overtime covering for those people that were called up. So that's part of the explanation, I understand.
Yeah, I don't have as much concern over the employment or overtime things, because some of that is outside our control. I understand that, and I understand that the individual department heads can't always track every dollar for department heads. That's not where my focus is. But I am focused on the operating expense side for repairs and capital side of it, knowing where we at with it, because you budget for those. And if we are running over on repairs greater than what was budgeted, for whatever reason, something broke that wasn't expected. There's always some, I'm calling it, there's always some extra contingency in that for those kind of things. I'm okay with that. What I'm getting at is, at some point, when we go over that amount, because I understand it's not all, it's not all of it is related to employment or personnel. Some of it is repairs and things like that. We should know. County, the individual departments should have a budget, end of the year, that's approved by their office. They should know every year how much they have spent in each one of them categories and track it. I promise you, every dollar that we spend at the board, we have to go through it before it's presented to our board for approval. We say, here's the available budget, here's the expenditure, here's the remaining balance. And before it comes to us, if there is an available budget, we do budget transfers to make sure it's balanced. So all I'm saying is, if you're not tracking what your expenses are that you can track, capital and operating expenses, then we're not, we're not, I don't know how we're tracking budgets, I guess is what I'm getting at, because when I hear that we went over. So we can follow with that. I understand, what my initial questions I was asking was understanding what we was looking at here and why there's differences here.
Yes, sir. Fund One O Eight. One O Eight is totally a grant fund, okay? And it has to do with all fire and rescue grants. And basically, all I have to do is true up, again, like I told you, a lot of times the requests come here, and then I go back and I have to true it up to what the board has granted, and I balance it. So it's not that we haven't or we won't receive the revenue. It will be received. It's just we expend, like we just said, we expend, and then the state reimburses us, okay? And that's why your expenditures look up higher than your revenues. It's true. That's the way this whole system operates. But recalling that this past year, purchased air packs, MCI trailer, the Sanderson Fire Station had a couple expenditures, and those were reimbursed by other additional grants, and that's what that amount is coming up to be. The largest one was four hundred thousand freight liner, twenty twenty-one freight liner, which took a while to get in service. But he's got it in service this year, and we got the revenue this year. So that will be trued up in twenty-five on the revenue side.
On the twenty-four, twenty-five side, right?
That was received recently.
Okay.
All right. Next fund is One Eleven. The One Eleven received more revenue than anticipated. For some reason, I didn't mark down what that one was.
The TDC, too?
Yes, TDC. It's just on tax revenue than typical. One Fifteen is your court revenue. This is to help the court pay fines, fees, and we deliver to the county. And that is more revenue than anticipated for the budget. One Twenty-Two is ship expenditures, and basically what I'm doing is trueing up. Last year, we received two ship revenues, three hundred and fifty thousand each. This year, I'm trueing up those revenues. It's coming out of the Council Seaver Home, and she was able to grant the expenditures of seven hundred and forty thousand. The One Twenty-Three is your Scholes grant, or your Scholes fund. And as you, if you can remember, when we were going through our budget proposals, we had these thoughts and visions for the Scholes Park. And we asked, y'all asked us, don't spend until you get some revenue. And as your county manager stated, we should get rid of this revenue this year. Well, we got it. So this is all due more revenue, which is timber sales, okay? Then your One Sixty-Six. One Sixty-Six fund is your sheriff's office radios. This past year in twenty-four, the vendor found two invoices that were not paid in twenty-three, and we paid them in twenty-four. So that consisted of two months of extra expenditures. So we have to true up those.
We're going to hold you up right there, Ms. Sheriff, without going to the public here at six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
We're on One Sixty-Six, Fund Sixty-Six.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Yes, sir.
How do you pass?
Oh, yeah.
I paid for my pass. I don't know if I just say I could have been in the county and used my position appropriately, and so I paid for that and your pass. Thank you.
We're taking a quick recess or no? We're going right into it?
I'll give you five minutes. Five-minute recess.
Go back into our regular scheduled meeting. We're going to start our public hearing. We're about four minutes off. That was not too bad. You're on board?
All right. Good evening.
How are you today?
I'm here. Tuesday. Yay. It looks like my week's been better than yours.
I have been roofing for two days.
Yeah, it looks like you've been in the sun a little bit.
I'm getting too old to be a roofer.
All right. Well, I just have two things for you this evening, both of which are first reading, and we'll try to make them as quick and painless as possible. Okay. So it's not very often that we have subdivision applications at all, but we have two of them at the same time. So we're going to get lots of practice. So both of these applications I have for you for preliminary and final review. Both applications came through pretty, in pretty complete packages. A lot of times we just get all the preliminary items, then we go through that part with you guys, and then they come back for a final review. In this case, we've worked a lot with both applicants, and they've both brought us a product that we feel like is ready for that final review. So we would go through the process, and then you would just see it again at the end for the actual plat. So the first application we have is on County Road 125, just across the street from where 139B comes out on County Road 125. The parcel was owned by North Star Acquisitions. Mr. David Burnham is their agent. You'll remember from last year, he just recently went through a rezoning and a land use change on this parcel. So it is 26.6 acres with a land use of high-density residential and a zoning of residential conventional .25. So the applicant intends to create a single-family residential lot subdivision. Each lot will contain a minimum of .25 acres. So here you'll see this is before the change. I have checked. This has been updated on our county maps, but it has not been updated online for the property appraisers map. Sometimes we see a, you know, it takes a little while. This is not a live map. So we can see if a parcel has recently went through a change. It's not always reflective immediately on the property appraisers website. But I have confirmed it has been changed, and with their next update, it will change as well. Okay. So this is what your lot layout would look like. You'll see it's one interior road with three, kind of three cul-de-sacs. Fifty-five lots total. Each lot is .25 acres or more. You'll see some in the, some along the backside of these lots, you know, are a little larger because of the angle of the lot. Each lot will be served by municipal water from the town of Glen. Each one will have a private septic tank. Secondary access has been provided for emergency purposes. So that is along here. And that has been approved from our fire rescue chief. They'll have, they've been given all of the information about putting that knock box or whatever they're going to use to put there to allow that access if needed. All of the fire protection needs have been met on the civil plans that have been submitted already, including the retention ponds, hydrants, dry hydrants. All of that has been approved by fire chief and our civil engineer, Troy Tarbox. The interior roads will be paved, and they will meet or exceed current county standards. Mr. Chris Lee's been given that information on the roads, and he has given his consent as well. So this is just a zoomed-out version of that lot layout. You'll see a little more detail of the access there, and that's going to give you a better idea of what that secondary page of the plating documents will look like. So again, we're asking for preliminary and final review at the same time. LPA as well as staff, both recommended approval. The final plat will have to be approved, signed, and recorded prior to the sale of any of the individual lots. And any outstanding permits from the Water Management District or any state permitting that comes along will have to be satisfied prior to us starting the permitting process. And if you have any questions for me or the agent, Mr. Burnham's here as well. If you have any questions for him, I have the full civil packet. If there's anything in there that you are interested, anything specific that you're interested in looking at.
I just have one.
Can I jump ahead of you on this one? I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, after speaking with our attorney, Rich Commander, I must abstain from conversation and voting on this due to a conflict of interest. So I'll be sitting out on this one.
Okay. One of the things that we talked about originally.
Mr. Chairman, you do that again next week. That's what actually be booked next week.
I thought this was the final here.
Well, I'm just proposing the preliminary and final review together. So it's still just the first reading.
For clarification, I think you need to make the announcement.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Just as a comment, and if it's already been addressed, that's fine. But I recall when this was really talked about that the lot widths and things were a little bit less than what our standards were. And so we're going to focus on making sure that the roads were sufficient and have a little wider width in order to make sure that if parking's on each side, we can still accommodate emergency vehicles. And that is, I'd like confirmation that has been addressed or taken into account.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from anyone in the public? Yes, sir.
I was just wondering.
Come to the mic if you would, please, sir. State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Allen Bin, 10881 North County Road 125.
Yes.
I was just wondering if they were going to leave trees around the perimeter of the land.
There's.
Do you leave trees around there? I didn't know.
Okay. I'll let someone respond. I'll let the.
It's just a curiosity on my part.
So we do have a vegetative buffer in some areas, but not, it's not around the entirety of the development.
So the trees are all going to be taken out? So you don't.
Mr. Burnham, I need to answer that.
Yeah. That's probably a question for Mr. Burnham. That's not saying that everything's going to be clarified. There's just a vegetative buffer that will be left. But that may be more specific to each lot. I'm not sure what the intention is, but that's definitely a confrontation that she does.
Oh, okay. Not right now, then.
I mean, no, no. That's something that he could answer now if he would like.
I didn't know if anybody had heard of that fallen tree at HB 599. It didn't pass. I mean, it was withdrawn from consideration, but I thought maybe they would. I didn't know how that would affect anything.
I think to answer the question, to be very clear, and I want to be transparent, make sure there's no misunderstanding. Right now, we do not have any requirements at the county level that says they must leave a tree line all the way around it or anything like that. So as of right now, the county doesn't have requirements that says that a developer has to do that. On certain sized lots, there is certain things that we do on larger wooded lots and things that we do put some buffers. But in this particular case, there's not a guarantee.
There's not, yeah, there's not a requirement for it. And with the House bill, if that's something that would have went through and passed, then of course, that's something that we would start requiring enforcement. But it didn't, it ended up kind of buying into the House. It didn't go anywhere.
All right. That's not wrong. Okay. Is there going to be an offense on that? My big concern was if they did take the trees out, if they could take the trees out on my side too. See, that whole basement was logged out about 20-some years ago, and they left the perimeter around there. So all those trees are pretty old around the perimeter. They're all like 60 feet plus tall. And I just wouldn't want, you know, if yours will leave the trees, that's fine, and I wouldn't worry about mine. But I wouldn't want any of my trees to fall that way and be held liable for anything in the future. Because they're old trees. They're 30 feet meters old, those trees. So I, it's something I just didn't know what you were going to do. I was just concerned that way.
Right. Now, the actual owner of the retirement, you know, the homeowner that buys the place, there's no trees to sell, to come before the lot. But generally, they can pretty much clear the entire line and give space maybe even if you plant more block field type trees. So it's hard to get that right here and right on. But if you want to securely typically do that, so you can bring the rest of the property. Typically, if you clear up the property line and get a test in, that goes out of the property line as well. So those all the trees of the property line, on your property side, you'd be able to.
Mr. Chairman.
You wouldn't take any of the line?
The audio is not picking up this conversation.
Sir, you're going to have to address the.
Mr. Burnham needs to come to the mic to answer the question.
Well, this is to record each meeting, and then you're talking to him, and then our IT guys can't hear what you're saying.
No, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll talk to you later. Go back and report that, Alan.
Yeah. But there's no requirements by the county or by the state that they should leave any, the trees?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Okay. Let's move to the next item.
All right. So the next application that you have, it's just like the first one for preliminary and final review together. So this parcel also went through a rezoning and land use change last year. This parcel is located off of US 90 East, or US 90 East towards the county line. It's 19.99 acres with a current land use of medium-density residential and a current zoning of residential conventional and mobile home .5. The applicant intends to create 28 single-family residential lots. Each lot will contain a minimum of one-half acre. This again is like the previous one. It has been updated in our internal map, but has not been updated for the online version. So this is kind of what your lot layout will look like. Again, it's 28 single-family lots, each containing a half acre. These lots in the back here, there are a few that are up to right at one acre just because of the angle at the, you know, the angle of the lot. They do get some additional acreage back there. Each of these will be served by private well and septic systems. We've had conversations with all newer property owners for lots of one acre or less. There are some stricter septic system requirements coming down from the state. And so we've had lots of conversations, not just with these applications, but anyone coming into the office that, you know, has a lot smaller than an acre or is looking to make their lot smaller than one acre. We've had those conversations to make sure that they understand there are going to be some additional requirements. And it can be a little more costly on the property owner. So we've made sure to have those conversations. The road information that's been provided, it meets emergency access requirements because it does, it loops completely around. They are proposing a paved road that meets all of our county standards. Everything else, fire protection, has been addressed with the fire chief. And the pond and hydrants meet all of those requirements.
Where's the pond? Is that along the back?
It's in the back.
Is that the big pond across the back?
It is. Yes, sir.
So let me ask you something. When you say it meets a pond and fire and hydrants, are you referring to pond hydrants? Because there's not, you don't, you're not building fire hydrants.
Right. So dry hydrants.
The dry hydrants for the ponds.
Yes.
Ben, and does the fire trucks have, how do they? This is another, we just need to make sure that they're put in a place that we can actually get to them. It doesn't make a lot of sense to require them to put them in if we can't get the fire truck down there to them.
Absolutely. And that's something that has been addressed with the fire chief. And just for clarity, this piece here in the center is an existing house. It is not part of, not part of the current development. And then that's kind of a zoomed-out version of what your second page of that plat would look like. Again, the final plat has to be approved, signed, and recorded prior to the sale of any individual lots. And any additional state or water management permitting would have to be satisfied prior to us starting to permit. In this case, this is a, it does join a DOT road. So everything that we've received meets the DOT standard so far. They will have to, once that connection starts happening, they're going to have to satisfy DOT and prove such. So in this case, it is a DOT. It is meeting a DOT road, not a county road. And they have approved all the culvering and everything so far. Staff recommends approval, and LPA recommended approval as well. And Mr. Phillips is here on behalf of the property owners if you have any questions for him.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to address Commissioner Bennett's question. The fire chief and I did have that conversation about the dry hydrants, and they are located near the road. So they're in a position where they're accessible, and he's good with the location.
Thank you. How many was it? One or two?
I know it may have only been one. I'd have to go back and look at the plans.
Do you know?
Just one. I thought it was just one. Yeah. But it is in a location that was acceptable to the fire chief.
Any other questions for the board? I have one question. I know there's a cell phone tower on the property.
There is.
Does it meet all the setbacks for that thing falling and not hitting a house?
It does. And so it was actually.
Back right corner.
Right. I was just seeing if I had a good.
There it is.
So.
Right back there.
This has, so it is in this back corner. So the pond is actually going to be in between the two. And then this still, this here is the easement that goes back to that cell tower. But it does meet those footages.
The houses are far enough away from the tower if someone's happened to.
It does. It meets those footage requirements. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
I will say, not specifically for this application, but for both. While we were talking with LPA and discussing the development review comments, we were discussing that process. And Gabe Powers, who sits on our LPA board, brought up something that, it's not anything that I had even thought about. He asked about mailboxes and the USPS. And most of the time in these sorts of developments now, they're not getting individual mailboxes. They are getting one of those large boxes out at the road. So we're, we've talked back and forth with them about maybe adding them as part of our development review in cases like this, so that we can get some feedback from them to make sure that wherever those boxes are going to be located, it's going to meet, they're going to have a safe place to pull off and things like that. It may not hurt just to have them as part of that review process for them to give their input, so.
Can we check with the post office to see what they're going to require? So we know what the post office is going to require?
So I have, I have left several messages, and I've sent some emails. I have not got a response yet. It's been, it's only been a week. But I have reached out.
Okay.
Just trying to get to the right person to ask those questions.
Enough on what you can rest assured and know of is it will not be built in FDOT's right-of-way. So anything in that, say right-of-way? It won't be that. It'll be a driveway, driveway only? So whatever's being proposed, it will be outside of there? It'll be on what I would consider the county right-of-way for this right-of-way?
Right. Right. And that's what, you know, Gabe brought up, that we want to make sure that there's a safe space for that. And it's a lot easier to do that, you know, kind of ahead of time. If we know this is what USPS is going to require, the developers can take that, you know, and have that information.
It's a great point, because also where it goes inside, if it is going, if that is going to be required and it has to go inside there. If it's on the county right-of-way, who is maintaining that?
Right.
And who's maintaining the pull-off? Who's maintaining where it's at? So we need to think about the maintenance responsibility of that if it's going to be within that public right-of-way of that roadway. Because I would, it's my understanding you're saying it's built to all county standards and requirements and so forth. So the intent would be for this road to be handed over to the county when it's all said and done, for us to maintain in perpetuity. So that's the point. If there's anything that's going to be placed within the right-of-way of that county road, we need to make sure that we are good with that because the driveway around it, all that comes ours to maintain.
Right. Right. And honestly, until we had those conversations, it's not anything that I had, that I had even thought of. So hopefully, hopefully soon, we can get a response back and have some information from them.
Are there HOAs for either of these developments? And if so, what would those HOAs cover?
So that's going to be a question. I have not had conversations about HOAs with either of these applicants, with both of them being paved and ideally being taken over by the county. Most of the HOAs that we see are for that road maintenance. So I'm not sure if either of the developers had any intent, but that would be a question for them.
Yeah, there will be HOAs. Maybe some of the pond, the promontories.
Could you come to the.
Is that the same? Yeah. So an HOA for maintain, for maintenance of the ponds and things like that. Mm-hmm.
Good. I think that's going to be written into the deeds.
Well.
It's kind of separate, but.
Well, it needs to be attached because they need to know what the HOA is for.
Right. So those are.
The color of the roof, the color. But I can tell you, I deal with them all the time. Painting your house? Or is it just going to be for maintenance on the pond?
The bylaws of the HOA, what it covers.
Right.
One thing to keep in mind, if there is mailboxes to be placed, like we just talked about, if you're going to have an HOA, that can be part of the maintenance where they have to cover those certain things. There's ways to work through that, especially if you're going to have the HOA to kind of manage the overall neighborhood.
So normally, those HOA covenants and restrictions are recorded after that plat's recorded, and we can definitely look at those and make sure that they.
That's just something I think the board needs to see what they're going to be before we move into the final plat.
We can make sure that happens. Absolutely. We can make sure you have that whenever you review the final plat.
I would want to see it.
I've got one question as far as signage. Are there going to be signs on this one? Like, I just read this one was Sadie Pines? Or is there signs located on that? And that's not in the DOT right-of-way, right? That's going to be on the county?
Oh, it won't be on DOT right-of-way.
Right. I mean, that's what, yeah, that's going to be inside, but.
Yeah. We have not discussed signage.
I was just curious.
Uh-uh. No.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone in the public have any comments, questions? Closes our public hearing. Go back in our regular. Does anyone need a break before we continue?
I can have two minutes with these ladies because they're going to leave. She's going to leave, and I just need two minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. I give you five minutes.
Okay.
Well, let's go to the square. Just talking to you.
Man, we really did phenomenal with that deal where we have all that revenue coming from the National Forest for thousands of acres, thousands and thousands and thousands of acres, and we still are expected to maintain the roadways.
Yes, sir.
Are we expected to maintain the roadways in the forest?
There's certain portions, like Sand Hill.
Yes.
Well, Sand Hill, yeah, and Eddy Gray, right?
Well, we get title one money to go to our road department as well.
Yeah, just saying, the amount of revenue that we make off of that is not much.
And this is what we use with our Firewise program also, those title three terms.
Right, so.
So this concludes the budget amendment that we need to finalize 2024. And that too, your first page was the resolution of 2025. I don't know if I read by title or Sarah.
I can if we have.
Hang on, before we get there, let's make.
Anything else I can help with, you please let me know. And I'll go ahead and be honest, because that's the way I roll. I will be back very shortly to get a budget amendment for 2025 and get everything caught up once again. And so it's going to feel good here pretty soon to get everything caught up and let's be more transparent.
And you'll see a lot of these revenue numbers coming in.
That's what we're going to see.
That's what I thought. So these numbers that we're looking at here now, the revenues we'll see in 2025.
Yes, sir, and I'll tell you when we mark it off.
Any other questions or comments on the budget amendment? If not, let's pray to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-08 rebuttal.
I'll take the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Sarah?
Quick.
Yep. Go ahead.
If you don't mind, explain to me just for the clarity on this. This is a process necessary before we can submit the audit for the 23, 24 year, am I correct?
This is the last process, yes, sir.
Okay. And the audit cannot be done until this is gone through and approved?
It can be, but I don't want to get written up for the same issues of not the entire, not reconciling and being accrual.
So, so.
So this will help.
So to be clear, to have it done appropriate, this needs to be done.
That's correct.
No, thank you.
It has to be.
Thank you.
Ms. Sarah?
Resolution 2025-08, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Baker County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, providing for an effective date.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, board, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
On that same subject, that was probably the best time, it was really a thing for Sarah. Sarah, when we get things coming before us that's got budget for expenses, not dealing with personnel, but other expenses, I want to make certain that we know we've got budget when we're approving these. It does concern me when we have things that's come through here that apparently we have over expended budget. We should know from each county department what budget was available, because we do that detailed breakout from everything from personnel, insurance, everything else, we do it for every different grant that we ask, we do it for every piece of equipment that we're purchasing. We, we haven't broken down all these expense categories.
Yes, sir.
If we're not going to follow it, then I'm not sure what's the benefit of it, right? So when it comes through us, I'd like to make sure that we have budget whenever we are getting approvals to do so, because, and I just know every single time we receive a grant, and when the fire chief comes up, for example, and proposes a grant that we receive, and it has a local match, the question is always, is always asked and is always stated, and we have the match in our budget?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we're spending more than what was budgeted, somewhere along the way, somebody's not accurate with that statement. So just, we need to make sure that we have budget when we approve it.
Yes, sir. Can I make a comment, please, Chair?
Sure.
I would like to meet with county manager and let's go over a little bit more in-depth procedures, because just like tonight, 911 came with their grant. We had no knowledge to put that in the budget, so I'm going to be coming to you with a budget amendment. Some things, yes, cannot be foreseen, but we can have a better communication channel, and I think that's one thing we can improve. And I could come on that same board meeting and do another budget amendment, so we can recognize all at once. But we, I thought we'd work out a better channel and communication line and help with transparency and everything and not catch up.
It's probably going to get asked at each one of those meetings as to whether or not we got budget, or was it included in the budget?
And it should be, to be honest. It should be, but we are going to try to help improve that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, at least specify if it's a reimbursement one, that a way we know.
That's true.
The difference, you know what I mean, on those.
99.999% of them is reimbursement.
Right.
That's true, too.
And we need to make sure that the people, the staff knows to get that into you, not the same day as the budget.
Yes, sir.
Not the same day we're having a meeting.
Yes, sir.
So y'all have that a week or so, a few days, to get all this paperwork together before you bring it here. A lot of things we see, you get the same day.
Yes, sir, sometimes we do, yes, sir.
And we need, that needs to change, too.
Yes, sir.
I think that's something you need to deal with, with your staff.
Yes, sir.
Not surprising you or the board with numbers on the last day.
She's got me almost trained, because I was supposed to come two weeks ago with budget amendments, and she's like, nope, we're starting to follow a policy.
I got that email, and I appreciate it. I think it was great, but it needs, it needs to go countywide. Now, if there's emergency, that's different.
If it's super time sensitive, you can adjust. However, as the routine practice, whenever it's coming here for us to accept grants, we should make sure that when we accept grants, we accept and agree into add the budget to be able to have it. Because otherwise, now, it's not just to accept the revenue that's going to come from it, we also need to know, are they going to expend it, and when they're going to expend it? So that, that way, we can do the budget amendment that accounts for the revenue and the expenditure. And so there needs to be a plan, if I'm getting this money, when am I spending it? And, and not, and it needs, so, so that's why I'm saying, it's not just about a budget amendment to receive the revenue, it needs to also have the companion of the expenditure with it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods.
Aye.
All right, item number six, approval of the contract extension Senior Life and Rich Richmond Center.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you all are aware, the Senior Life and Rich Richmond Center actually is occupied, and we actually had a grand opening. This contract was set to expire in the end of June of this year, and the reimbursement process can be a little bit lengthy, and so on the abundance of caution, our state grant manager requested that we do an extension, just simply to do that reimbursement process. This does extend it through June of 2026, however, we're, like I said, we're just in the reimbursement process now. Sometimes those get delayed at a state level for upwards of 45 to 90 days. So just to make sure we don't run into any issues with this being closed out in a timely manner, this is simply, like I said, it does extend it for one full year, but it's, it's simply just to go through the reimbursement process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Sarah? If not, let's pray to the board.
I move we extend the contract for Senior Life and Rich Richmond Center through June of 2026.
Second.
And motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven is approval of the invoice for James Moore audit. Ms. Sarah?
Yes, sir, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So James Moore, just to make sure everyone is aware, is our contracting firm that we use for our auditing services. This year, our contract totaled $107,000 for this service. Attached to your agenda packet, you do have an out of scope bill, which means that this was beyond the $107,000 contracted amount. This invoice totals $40,000, and because of the amount, and in addition to that, because it being out of scope with the contract, it does require B O C C approval. So this is just being presented to you all. There is an email that's attached, I apologize that it's so small. When we do our ADA conversions on these packets, sometimes it does odd things with, with fonts. I did share that email with you all directly, so it's a little better for you to read that, but the auditor has went into detail as to why these overages occurred. I know that they presented to us just a few weeks back about all the work that they did, you know, to make sure that the fiscal year 2023 audit was submitted. So I think you all have a pretty good understanding of why that was. I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if you have any, however, we're asking for approval of the $40,000 invoice that's submitted.
Any questions or comments?
Comments?
Yes.
One is, I'm going to start off with James Moore. One, I'm going to support paying it, let me be clear upfront, because they've done the work.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to support it. But I do have a problem with them not understanding their own contract, because what, what has taken place here could very well be an audit issue, from my perspective, not a financial audit, but an audit issue, where they had a contract with this Board of County Commissioners, and when extensions were done, they were not approved by this board, it was approved by the clerk, who was not a member of any signatory authority to be able to do so, and it happened more than once. That's on James Moore and Associates for agreeing to that. It may have happened in the past, it may have always been done that way, but that don't mean it was done right. And so from this point on, it was, it's been made exceptionally clear through the clerk that the audit form, firm reports to this board, not her, we hire them. I expect James Moore and Associates to report to this board and keep this board as informed as the clerk and the clerk's office. That's, that's really upfront, because extensions have been approved. In addition, we were asking for them to hurry up and get the audit done, and nowhere along the way, did James Moore anything else say, oh, and by the way, this is additional work out of scope? Was anybody aware that we're going, was going to get an additional $40,000 bill after the fact?
No, sir.
Okay, that's item number two. If you're going to go beyond the scope of work, you get approval before it, or you, for, as a consultant, when I was, I didn't get approval, I, right? We asked them, and he's shaking his head because he knows that's the way it works in engineering consulting, anyway. You get approval before you do it, or else you don't do the work. Now, we were pushing them. So I'm, I'm going to agree to pay it, because they did the work to get us out, out of a bind, but I want to be clear on this, that one, we should have, we should have been the ones signing contract extensions, not the clerk. Two, if there's been additional work, they should have been making us aware that there was going to be additional work, even if they couldn't have fully articulated the final amount, they should have at least made us aware of it, so we could have given approval to proceed under a not to exceed amount.
Yes, sir.
We weren't, didn't even get that, so that's item number two. So I, I will, they helped us get an audit in that otherwise would not have been done. Now, we'd still been dealing with it, so I'm good, I'm agreeing to this. But $40,000 is a lot to get us, to get us to back home.
If I may, yes. I don't understand why James Moore is that amount over. Granted, we had some involvement with that, getting them to move forward, getting it in a timely manner, and I appreciate it. But this is just for James Moore, there's additional costs to come on top of this for getting that audit prepared and in on time. And when you talk about the total that it cost us to give that.
Almost $56,000 total, between this and the other one, by the way, the total is almost $56,000 extra.
When you talk about the total amount that we're spending to get our audit done on time, like Commissioner Bennett says, I'll vote to approve the bill, because we did demand that we work as diligently as possible, but I see the cost as exorbitant.
I, I think to clarify on some of the, I mean, really, the email on the back of it really goes into detail on exactly why they charged us that, so I, I'm just going to read what the email says right here. This is an email from Ben Clark to Sarah. I'm, I'm going to skip right to the second paragraph, but it says regarding our invoice, this was discussed with the clerk's office and approved by them, and essentially covers the time and expense associated with completing the audit outside the original timeframe, and for assistance with any needed adjustments during the audit. As you know, the audits are normally fixed fee nature, but we do have a standard clause in our engagement letter, that when things are provided outside of timelines, or we have to assist in correcting balances, or assist in other ways, we are able to bill for that, because this leads to additional time on our side, therefore additional fees and billing. We always make it a point to try and limit any out of scope billing as much as possible, and in this case, we still wrote off about 25% of our cost, even, even including this bill. In addition, by providing the audit with the expedited manner by, in the March timeframe, that required us to utilize staff who had a higher billing rates, and that in turn led to increased cost for the audit, which in turn necessitates this charge. So technically, the 40,000, 25% of it was already wrote off, so it was really a $50,000 invoice from James Moore. They cut us a deal, charged us 40, 40 for it, but it was due to things that they had to do outside of the audit. When an auditor comes in, they're supposed to take the financials as complete and audit them based on their findings. They had to adjust our bills, as, as we seen in the adjustment, the adjusting journal entries that we talked about last month, or last meeting, I think there were 16 million in adjusting journal entries. So some of those came from CKH, who assisted in reconciling some of the accounts and getting the funds back in order. Others came from James Moore to get everything back in order to complete and accurate financials. And then they were able to audit it per our engagement at that point. So this right here, I mean, I, I vote that we, you know, go ahead and pay it myself, because they did, they assisted, and we, we got through with it in the timeline that we, you know, kind of were given. So that, that kind of answers some of the, the board's questions here, and why we're getting this invoice right now.
And Tyler, thank you for the additional clarification. So I want to be clear, I truly believe they worked and earned the money. I think they had to do a whole lot more than the audit firm should ever have to do or touch. I believe they've done this. And from a consultant's side, I do know that typically, you want to be very careful when you come back and hit a client up with a bill like this, that you've got to be able to validate and be explained. So I, I do not question whatsoever whether the work they've done was necessary to get it done, and certainly a lot more than was ever anticipated for them to have to do. So that's, again, I'll support it. But again, I come back to this fact that it was approved, this additional work was approved outside of this board, and I have a problem with that, and, and I'm going to be very clear, I have a problem with the clerk operating outside her authority, committing things that this county has, that the Board of County Commissioners have to pay. And I'm going to now, so from this point on, Sarah, it needs to be made very clear to James Moore, that if there's going to be changes in fees or scope of work, it is to get approval from this board and no one else. They can propose it, they can get everybody's blessings on it, but ultimately, until this board approves it, if they bring another bill back here that has not been blessed by this board, I'm not going to vote for it, because of that reason. That's where my frustration comes in. I do believe they did the job, and they did a lot, they did a yeoman's job to get this thing, to get it submitted. So I'm going to support it, I'm not questioning their integrity, I'm not questioning that they do the work. I do raise a concern with having the approvals appropriately before it's done.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Anything else? I need a motion.
With, with this invoice, actually, look, I'll, I'll skip down, we'll, we'll save that for the prior business. Need a motion to approve this invoice?
Yeah, I can't do it without a motion.
Yes, sir, I'll give you a motion to approve invoice to James Moore in the amount of $40,000.
I'll take the motion.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into item number eight, and a letter to the governor requesting forensic audit.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure everyone has, has a chance to read, it was sent out to you with emails.
Yes, sir, you do have a printed copy in front of you, and I apologize, I'm trying not to cough, but you do have a printed copy in front of you. Mr. Commando and I have prepared this letter, so this does meet his legal opinion as well, and it's ready for signature, should the board decide to move forward with that tonight. And we do have one speaker card.
Yeah, I'm pitching to go ahead with the speaker card before the board's come. I have Mr. Joel Foreman. You know the procedure, I don't have to tell you.
Of course, I know it too well, it is nice to see you all again. I didn't get a chance to look at the letter, is it just a request to do a forensic audit?
Here's a copy if you want.
I did speak to Rich very briefly this afternoon, or excuse me, this morning, so I have an understanding of where y'all are headed with this. The clerk did ask me to come over and, and indicate she's, she's not opposed to this. I mean, if this is something that everybody wants to do, it's certainly something that can be done. Clerk's been audited, she feels comfortable that the outcome of the audit is going to show what the other audits have shown, and, and that's fine. It does take a little bit of time and attention away from her other duties, but again, if that's something that everybody wants to do, that's fine. One of the conversations I had with Rich today, though, was whether or not the board would consider going to the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee and asking for what's called an operational audit. And based on some of the things I hear at your meetings, I, I don't know if, I mean, Rich and I kind of agree, not a bad idea. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to add clarity, because of a question that you asked, this is asking for comprehensive operational and forensic, forensic audit.
Okay, it is, it does say.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to clarify that, it is, it is both of that.
And it is going to J-LAC.
Yeah, he indicated that.
The board warned the operational, so it could help.
Okay.
To facilitate and help us all.
I think it's, I think it's a good move, because, because a lot of the things we've expressed concern about really are operational, it's really a nuanced question about how does the Constitution really work with respect to these different units of government, and a lot of times a J-LAC audit is going to point out, tweak this, and you'll be right, tweak that, and you'll be right, and I think it's probably an easier pill for a lot of people to swallow if it's coming from J-LAC, right? So did want to express support for that. The clerk did ask me to re-extend her invitation, if anybody wants to come see her at any time for any reason, she, she feels like she doesn't see anybody from the county, her office, she wanted me to extend that invitation to you. And then if, if you had any questions that you felt like I could answer about this, but it sounds like y'all are already on board with the J-LAC issue, so that was really my primary purpose in coming here. So I do appreciate it, we know we have issues that we're working on, I, I want you to understand that the clerk's objective and my objective is to try to get through those issues and get us to a good spot. People voted for her, the people voted for you guys.
Yeah.
People get what they voted for, and we kind of like it, so I appreciate y'all's time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
More comments?
Ms. Chairman, just a couple of things, we received the letter in draft format in the email yesterday, there's been two modifications, just to make sure you're clear on, one was just a typo up here in the first statement, and the second one, we added Representative Chuck Brandon and Senator Bradley to the list of CCs, just because they're some of our legislative delegation, so we added those to that as well. I'm the one that asked for this last time, we have it here, I'm, I'm good with the letter, I appreciate that effort there as well. I do believe this is the right step. I believe we need to understand what's happening, where we're at, that there's been findings year over year, that's the same findings that haven't been addressed, we're about to complete, hopefully, the 24, but I am very much concerned as to whether it'll be done on time, and will they be the same findings that's happened in the last two audits that was just presented, or are we going to have the same findings again for the 23, 24 year? We already halfway through the 20, the 24, 25 year. So how long are these going to continue? So I hope this will help try to address some of those. But again, I'm the one, the heading was a letter to the governor, we did have, go through that discussion and agreed that it's best to send it to J-LAC, and that's why it's now been formulated to send it to J-LAC. And so with that, I'm good with the letter, I did ask for all five commissioners to sign it, because I think it shows solidarity with this board, where our concerns are, and so the letter's prepared so that everybody can sign it as well, and we, we should all be able to sign it before we leave today. And I know Commissioner Hartley's not here, but I would ask Sarah to please reach out to him and get it signed as soon as possible, so this can get sent out, hopefully tomorrow. And so with that, I'm glad to put a motion on the floor to approve the letter with that, and I'll go ahead and put a motion on the floor, so it can be seconded in discussion.
I have a motion, any, any other comment?
I think.
Can I get a second, first?
I'll second.
Now we can do comments.
Comments. I, I think it's a step in the right direction, just to, to make sure everybody, I mean, we're all going in the right direction, you know what I mean? And just to gain the, the confidence back, and to make sure I, we've got all of our ducks in the air, you know, so I'm excited about it, and look forward to it.
I think we need to reassure the taxpayers of the county that their funds are being managed correctly, and I think an external audit is an easy way to do that, it reassures the board, it reassures the clerk, it reassures the taxpayers, and I think it's the right move moving forward.
I'm in support of it for the simple fact that we need it, and I think that it's going to be great on the operational side, it's going to give the duties that each one of us have on the county side, and I think that when they go in there, they can tweak things, and they can tell, our finance, you know, look at this, look at that. Anytime that you can bring an outside source in and to make you better, I think this is going to make us better. And we definitely need to be better than what we have been in the past. And I think that this, this is a great step forward to getting us better on the county and, and on the clerk's side. And so I'm going, I'm in support of it, especially on the operational side. And then the, for our citizens of our community, I've had a lot of phone calls, a lot of personal talks with people, and I haven't had anybody who's against doing this audit, out of everyone that I've talked to. So I think it's supported universally from this board and from the clerk. I'm glad to hear that she agrees to it, I think that it's going to help her, and it's going to help us, and, but most importantly, it's going to help build trust amongst our citizens here in Baker County, and it'll make a lot of things transparent, and we need to be transparent. We're, we're not dealing with our money, we're dealing with the county's money, the people of the county's money. So I agree with this, and I have a motion and a second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And Ms. Sarah, do we have the corrected version?
Yes, sir, you do, that's what's in, in front of you now. The one in the agenda packet had a typo.
You got a clean version?
Yeah, what we do is we get, we can get everyone to sign it before everybody leaves here tonight.
Yes, sir, Ms. Kayla's got it.
Commissioner Hartley can sign it, even if you need to go meet him at the school or whatever you need to do, let's get it signed. Okay. Now, let's move to our prior business, and, well, number one pending business report. Ms. Sarah?
Yes, sir, thank you again, I'll try to make this brief, so that I'm not coughing on everybody in here tonight, apologize for that. The COA bus wash, as you guys are aware, we have been working through some water supply issues, water pressure issues there. I did talk to the contractor last week, and they were successfully able to run some new piping into the building, we believe we had tailored that down to that being the problem, I think we had a few issues, we have, on our end, have resolved all of those. So the contractor did install some larger diameter piping upon testing that we just did and our contractor did, we are getting more than adequate pressure inside the building now for the equipment. So the equipment installer had to come out and do his own calibration, I have not gotten the results from that, again, this was late last week when we had this conversation, so as soon as I have those final results from the equipment installer, that that calibration is correct, which we believe, I've said that everything has been resolved, then we'll be officially able to use that bus wash facility, and we can begin the reimbursement process for that, because that is the final holdup on that. So that's some good news on that one.
Question on that, was the piping that was in the building pre-engineered by the engineer or by the contractor?
That was a design build, so that was completely designed by the contractor that did the construction, so that was not a county designed building.
Okay.
Yes, sir, so that, that was at their expense, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving down the list, the boat ramp we've talked about earlier this evening, and we're Moving down the list, the boat ramp we've talked about earlier this evening in regards to our emergency management discussions. That continues to make its way through the process on phase two. That is the design of the restroom facility. That's, North Florida's handling that for us, Mr. Clint Capsule. If you guys have had a chance to meet him, he's here every two weeks. His team is working on that for us and doing a great job keeping that project moving forward.
So that one's really got to wait until everything gets fixed, right?
No, sir. That's just the design of a restroom and lighting facility so that can happen simultaneously.
Just a design.
And permitting, design and permitting. So we need to apply for additional funding for any construction to be able to make that happen. So we've got to close out these first two phases or at least one of these phases before we can move on to additional funding. But yes, sir, that's not any construction. So that's just design and permitting. Moving down on to the COA Senior Life and Richment Center. Excuse me. Again, we discussed that previously tonight. This project is complete. We are just moving through the reimbursement process and we don't anticipate there being any issues with that. It just, it does take some time to move through the state level. Moving on down, I don't have any updates for you on some of those projects. There's just been really no movement on there. Courthouse Generator, just to remind you all, that project has been awarded and the equipment has been ordered. It's just in waiting for it to be delivered. There was quite a long lead time on that generator. Backing up, I'm sorry, on the NAB sports complex, we do have a meeting with staff and Little League and our contractors that have donated their services to Baker County. We are actually going to meet the first of next week to talk about phase two because Little League season is wrapping up. And we've got some more projects and some more state dollars to keep using on that. So we'll have another plan to present to you all very soon. Again, that one was just on hold while the Little League season was underway.
When is that? Next week?
We are meeting next week, yeah. I think we set up for Tuesday. I'd have to double check my calendar.
That's fine.
Meeting for lunch or what?
We are meeting late in the afternoon here at the office. You know, my motto, we don't meet unless we eat, so maybe we can have a snack.
Well, I was thinking that all the work that these contractors has done for the county, I think it would be proper for the county to take care of feeding them and.
Yes, sir. We actually are working on.
They've donated a lot of their time and.
I don't want to say too much. We are working on something that we'll make sure we get with you guys.
If the other commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Let me know when that meeting is.
Okay. Yeah, I'll double check my calendar when I get a second.
Next week?
Yes, sir.
I won't be here. I'll be in Nicaragua.
Okay. Commissioner Mala, you want to attend?
Yeah, if I got time, I'd love to be there.
Okay, sure. We'll check calendars in just a few minutes. Moving on down into the Sanderson Center, that project was, required us to do a new well installation there. We had some issues with the water testing unfortunately because the water sat still for so long in the well. We see that sometimes where you have to take a few rounds to get your water quality testing to pass. So that did happen this week and the facility is back open to the public now as we speak. Again, I know Mr. Moore is working on some things with his ADA structural engineer. We have not gotten a report back from Mr. Moore yet, but I know it's a priority for him to move that project forward. And he's working on a separate project for himself personally. So I know he's got quite a bit going on right now, but as soon as he gets some information to present to us, I know he'll be back with that. So I'm just anxiously awaiting what his people have to say about making those bathrooms ADA compliant because it is definitely necessary. Unless there's any further questions, that's it for the pending business report.
Yes, sir.
Two things. Sarah, we still have Kyler Fire Station on here. What's the outstanding items at Kyler?
I apologize. I did not have a conversation with Chief Blanton before this meeting, but I will get that updated.
I thought we just might have painted last.
It was, and we had talked about having a grand opening ceremony. And that is in the works as well. We just have not set a date for that. But I will get an official update for you all.
Okay. So when I see things on here that has occurred five months ago, it's probably, it tells me this hasn't been updated. So if you don't mind, just let us know what's going on with that.
We may have missed that one.
So we can move down forward. And finally, I do want to say to whoever made the decision and did the work that trimmed those very high shrubs down by the sports complex, by the NAB field and things.
Yes, sir.
And cut them back down to a reasonable size. It looks so much better in my opinion.
That was staff that did that. They did a great job.
So tell them thank you very much. They did a really good job. They, while they look kind of rough right now, they will clearly grow back really fast. But nonetheless, keeping them lower is much better than having those 10-foot high shrubs.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Sarah? Item number two, expense report over $5,000. Any questions for Sarah? American Rescue Plan, any updates?
No, so there's been no expenditures to these items.
All right, we're looking for our fiscal year 23, 24 audit update, which we've heard some of it already. So anything to add?
Yes, I can update us on the, we had a Zoom team call yesterday with James Moore and the clerk and Ms. Cheryl with County Finance. Right now, we are waiting on the trial balance to be submitted for the Board of Commissioners, for the county's financials. And so I know Ms. Cheryl was waiting on the amendments tonight that were approved to be added to the financials in order to upload them into the trial balance to be submitted back to James Moore, hopefully by tomorrow. So that's where we're at. The kind of upsetting news that we got yesterday was due to the timeline and it being submitted by May 21st, they're not expecting to get done by the June 30th deadline. Ben kind of went ahead and broke that to us yesterday. And it, right now, it's being submitted at the 21st. It puts them in a very tight crunch. And basically, the way he said it is they don't want to start with something because all the other constitutionals have submitted and everything's there. They don't want to start on an audit just to have to, all right, well, I've got to stop because I don't have everything in front of me. He wants to have everything in front of him in order to tackle it before he even begins. You've got other counties that have everything in front of them. They can start and go all the way through and finish. They didn't want to just piecemeal ours together, so they were waiting on everything to be submitted back in order to begin. A realistic timeline is the end of July, assuming the trial balance and supporting documents are clean and complete. And based on Ms. Willis's comment yesterday, we believe everything's going to be submitted back. As soon as she submits trial balance, she thinks that everything's going to go through and we should be good. There should not be any outside work that James Moore is going to have to do in order to reconcile, clean up any accounts or anything. It should just be a one and done. Submit it to him and it should be audited at that point. So that's where we're going on the assumption of right now. Until we're told otherwise, that's where it's at.
But being in the July, or 1st of July, which is not going to put us into any problems with the state?
I cannot speak on behalf of J-LAC on that. I know we're given a deadline of 6:30 and we're not expected to meet it at this time.
I would, I would.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would recommend that we go ahead and take a step ahead and send a letter to J-LAC advising them where we're at in the process, what has taken place, when we, that the auditor is under contract. We have, all the documents have been submitted to them on May 21st. But we expected it to be completed and submitted them by the end of July. I think we need to be more proactive in letting them know that we're missing it, but we are, have a plan and it is being worked on in order to do that. And so my recommendation would be to, for Sarah to draft out a letter. I would certainly suggest it come from the chairman if everybody else is good with that. But I would think we're going to be viewed more favorably if we let them know we are addressing this. We're actively doing it multiple steps. So that'd be my suggestion.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment.
So I like, I like the proactive approach on this. Get in, get in ahead of it saying, hey, realistically, here's where we're at. And addressing it now versus.
Only going to request a letter from the county but from the clerk also, so they can let them know.
I think it needs to come across as a unified front. There is a, that there, that there is both, that we are working to address this. The commission is working with it. We hired the auditor. The clerk is committed to making sure it happens too. So them two letters could go, but I think we need to be proactive and get ahead of it. Can I come back and answer a couple, ask a couple of questions about what you've covered?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll add on. Go ahead.
If you're not done, that's fine. Okay. You indicated we're expecting the trial balances to be, everything to be submitted then tomorrow? Okay.
And that completes the list.
That completes the list. So it would be anticipated that it's a complete list with everything without having a number of resubmitals and things being done. And right now, so there's no outside work being expected to be done by James Moore. So we're not expecting any additional effort or a surprise invoice to be able to do that. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Correct. I asked that question yesterday during our meeting, or like the teams, yeah, or CKH. I asked the question, I asked them, you know, first of all, can you explain this invoice to me? Second of all, this audit that we're talking about now, the 23, 24, is there, am I going to get hit with anything else outside of it? Would you not expect to be hit, and she's in agreeance with us back here, would you not expect to be hit with anything coming from there? They also asked about CKH, Ben asked about CKH, working on the 23, 24 audit. And they are not working on the 23, 24 audit at all, correct? Okay. So there, we should not be receiving any invoices from them. Or I think, did they come to us or the clerk or not?
They went to the clerk. That was our contract.
The clerk, the clerk had the contract, didn't they?
Correct.
Okay.
And the ballot, we've got, we've seen two invoices from CKH that totaled just, if I recall correctly, just under $16,000. Are those all the invoices that we are expecting to get or is there any more that's going to come in? As far as, do we know that answer?
I don't know.
Just the two, the March and the April? I think it was just over, just over 15.
It's more than 15, less than 16.
That's right.
It's between 15 and 16.
Right. 15, 175. So we got the 15, 175 and the 40 for completion of the 22, 23.
And so that should be it. We shouldn't have any other, so here's why I'm, again, why I'm wanting to make sure I understand. We lost $66,000 for the 22 audit. The 23, well, we got sanctioned, we got it submitted before it happened, but it still cost the taxpayers an extra $55-plus thousand to get the audit done.
Correct.
That's why I'm so concerned with where we're at. The taxpayers spent two years, we've lost over 110, 100-plus thousand dollars in revenues, taxpayer dollars, that should have been in this county's coffers. And that's why I'm wanting to make sure that we're on track and we got to be upfront with J-LAC. If we're not going to make it, let's be upfront with them so they know because that will be a good step to try to ensure they don't issue sanctions to us before we go in. Because technically after July, after June 30th, they could have a meeting July 1st and decide to go ahead and issue sanctions because of our history. We've got a bad history right now. We got to come out of it. So that's why getting ahead of it now is, I think, the right step.
I want to bring up something else in regards to James Moore. They were speaking yesterday in our Zoom call about how they typically work with interim financials in the fall, the late fall, whenever our fiscal year ends, interim financials until we get everything completed and reconciled with other counties. And so they were talking about trying to get into that process where they're getting financials sooner rather than, hey, we're submitting it, please audit it. And so it's a process of getting it to them. They're working through and as we're making corrections, additional corrections to get everything balanced out. And then at that point, we send them the final trial balance and then begin auditing it. Going forward, I think that would be a good step to try to get it, you know, get us in a process of doing this in the late fall, you know, or, you know, 10, October, November, December, trying to get them interim financials. Yes, ma'am, please. And so that was part of the conversation yesterday.
Again, Cheryl Rose, County Finance. And some of y'all have been with me for the 10-year tenure I've been here. And this is just, the last three years have been the most recent issues I've ever had. Otherwise, I do follow that procedure. I do follow up. We normally have everything submitted by December and we're normally completing by February, March, depending on their schedule, constitutionals, and when they can meet up. But since, and I hate to say this, but it is the fact, is that conversion did not convert everything. It threw our finance system off. A lot of things did not convert over correctly. We have had staff work tremendous hours, nights, days, everything, trying to rekey everything, then you balance and everything else. So the finance stuff we have now, we all feel like we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We can get the reports faster, we can get balances faster. Even James Moore said, y'all seem to be able to respond faster to our requests and everything. So for fiscal year '25, I do not think we will have a problem unless there is another glitch of some sort. But otherwise, I feel confident. And with the tenure I've had here and with some of the rapport I've had here with some of you, I feel like y'all know me and I will do the finest job I possibly can. And I will continue doing that. So for '25, I'm on track with getting everything done by at least December, if not before then. I got a good staff now and we're going to get this done.
Thank you. Question, this is not an additional cost getting it in early? Or is it part of the?
What do you mean?
The review for James Moore?
I don't believe so. I think it's, it all kind of sets itself up. But I don't hold me to that.
But I'm going to hold you to it until you find me an answer.
I'll find you an answer.
Because what I don't want to do is accrue additional costs if we don't have to. So we need to, we never had this issue before. That's what I'm saying.
Have you typically submitted late December, early December interim financials? I meant late, late December. I'm just talking about a timeframe, not late financials. But I mean, if the fiscal year is 9/30, by November, are you submitting something normally to James Moore?
Yes, because just like it was pointed out before, and even Jeffrey, when he was here, the constitutionals have to close out to the county.
Correct.
By a timely manner. And it's, I believe, 60 days. And then the county has to finalize. And then we all start submitting all of our reports. They normally get us the list and we start submitting. So that's typically how it's done. And then James Moore hops on it, then they come back and ask more reports, more questions, and then we go back and forth for about 30 to 60 days.
Right.
So that'd be part of the audit and process.
Yes, yes. And to answer the question, that's what he was saying, other counties, because it eliminates a lot of the, hey, we're having to go over this and do it. One thing I do want to ask, and it may throw a curveball in going forward and everything, when does James Moore's engagement letter end? Or their engagement with the county? When does it end?
You got the last extension. I'm not sure. Y'all got the last.
I believe they have the 20, 25 audit.
The 24, 25 audit? So we're engaged with them to do the 24, 25 audit?
Yes.
But the 25, 26 audit? We will either have to do an addition or, or an extension or either go out for advertising, correct?
I think that's the end of, we have to go out for advertisement.
So typically, the county doesn't extend contracts past six years without going out for RFP. That's our standard. So at this point, regardless of any situation, we would go out for RFP at the end of this contract.
When would we need to go out for RFP for the 25, 26?
Typically, January, right? And then you get six months and then you get.
The earlier the better, honestly. We can sit down and look at timelines in closer detail, but if we're talking, if they're going to need that information in October, November of this year, potentially?
There's nothing that prohibits us from proceeding now.
No, sir, having it in place.
To go ahead and get the new one on board for the new year? You have two overlapping contracts, but they're working on different things, two different firms, no same work. So if this isn't, if this is the last year of engagement we have, we need to start making a plan to get those auditors on board in advance and not at the last minute. So that's not a reason why an audit wasn't done on time.
Yes, sir.
We, our year closes out October. We need to have them on before, by the time we close out a year to be able to have them available to do that work. So, good question, good point.
We can start that process, yes, sir. We've got a draft RFP, just a previously used RFP from when we hired them.
Looking, looking at it for the next couple of years, the sooner we get it in, the better. Because if we're doing budgets for next year, you know, we're 24, 25, so it ends next year. But then we need to, we need to have that in the budget going forward. But then we need to, we need to have that in the budget going forward. So we need to have a future outlook on that.
Really for advertising, advertisement, excuse me, I would prefer that we go ahead and do that pretty quickly. Just that there's no, no reason for delay. For some reason, the first round, you only get one response and you have to re-advertise or things like that. I would prefer to go ahead and really, the timeframe would really be, I would, before the end of June.
Because the new firm would be auditing the October financials.
Correct.
I, I would.
If there's a new firm, I'm sorry.
Correct. And that's very true. James Moore can submit a proposal, they're, they're not prohibited from doing that, but they would have to go through the process to submit a proposal to be considered for.
We'll seek to hire the best qualified, if it's them it is, okay?
That's right.
Um, I would suggest that you take that scope and have it re-read thoroughly.
Yes, sir.
Because if it was six years ago, I am confident there's gonna be some things that need to be done differently in the scope to be able to, to address it as well.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I know, they asked the clerk's office to review it as well.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Anything else?
Did that, that, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda next, next week? Or if we can give it a couple of weeks or a month?
I would ask for a schedule by next meeting of when we're gonna do it, so if when you're gonna advertise and things, so we can at least have a good idea of laying it out when it's gonna be done.
Yeah, I don't want to say we need to do it soon and then I kinda want, you know, have, here's a date.
Correct, yes, sir. So we don't need board approval to issue the RFP, that's just standard procedure with, with our procurement process. But certainly, we can present a schedule and keep you all, if you'd like, I could just add it to our pending business report? So that it's one that you all are aware of and we talk about every two weeks.
That'd be good.
Okay.
That'd be good, appreciate it.
Not a problem.
I would ask, when you have, got your RFP out, we get a copy?
Of course.
Each, each commissioner, okay, so we have input on.
Certainly, we can do that before it's finalized.
Thank you. And as well, on the same subject, I'm gonna set my expectations clear up front. Audit should be done, presented to this board, and submitted in March. I see no reason why we cannot do that in six months timeframe. If we've done three audits, we will have, this will be the third audit now that's been done under the new software. If we, if we still can't have our finances reviewed, closed out, and done, I can just tell you where I'm at, our budget's a whole lot bigger and we do the same thing every year. I checked on the, the hundred and seven thousand dollars, we pay about a hundred and seventeen, I think is what we pay, ballpark number, for the same type thing, very similar process, all these same things. And ours is done and approved, and it's approved typically February timeframe. I, the regional council, they did theirs, we approved it. So to me, I just want to be clear, what my expectations are, is I do not want us to be in a situation where we are submitting late or any close to that late. We have got to get things changed with the represent, with the, with our reputation, with J-LAC. I don't want us to be submitting things late and being on that dirty list.
Yes, sir, understood.
Not in this.
It's never good when you get on that list because people remember it for too long.
Anything else, commissioners, on the audit? All right, we're moving to our next item on the agenda, which is county manager.
I do have one, just a reminder that the senior citizens' fish fry is this Thursday at the Baker County Fairgrounds. Doors open at eleven AM and food is served at noon. Hopefully, if you guys have the availability in your schedule to be there, come join us, help serve some meals. And if any senior citizens are, are listening to us, they'll join us as well.
I won't be there, but I can tell you, commissioners, if you haven't ever been there and you haven't ever served the seniors, it's, it's a joy.
It really is. It's a fun, it's a fun event. We've got live music, it's gonna be a good day, it always is.
I actually plan on being there, I took a day off to be able to go and do that.
We'll put you to work.
I'm looking forward to that because it is one of those things, it's very, for me, it's sometimes very difficult to be able to get off work to be there to do it. But, but it is very nice to be able to do it because those seniors, they look forward to this all year long. And it's amazing, they get out and see folks that they haven't seen in quite some time and it's truly just, they truly, they appreciate this. And this is the small, what I'll call the small-town things that can be done, that really mean a lot. And so I would encourage, if anybody that could come, and encourage the public to come as well.
Yeah, and they also do door prizes, so if you want to donate, you can do that and then gift card or whatever you want to do.
That's right.
Gift cards and cakes.
Yep, they have a great time. I wish I could be there, but it seems like every time they schedule it, I'm gone. Anything else, Ms. Sarah?
No, sir, that's all I have, thank you.
The county attorney, you got anything?
No, he's not.
Commissioner comments? Start with you, Mr. Mann, do you have anything?
I do. We've talked about new subdivisions, new developments, some moving forward, some in planning stages. As the county goes forward and these new developments come along, some are very large. The impact of those subdivisions on our county economy is gonna be enormous. One of the planned subdivisions has land set aside and their proposal for a fire station, the fire station equipment for that location would be approximately six and a half million dollars. The taxpayers today cannot foot that bill. We need to look at impact fees, we need to have those new developments pay their share moving forward. And I just think we need to put it on the agenda for discussion. And I know it costs to get the survey done, then I understand the finances that we're in today. But as we move forward, more and more of that burden's gonna fall on the small group of taxpayers that we have today. We need to share that startup cost, if you will, with those new subdivisions, with those people that are buying and building here. So that's just my thoughts on it and I'd like to see us have more discussion on it as we move forward.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
Sarah, what I would ask you to do on that subject is check with Rich to see about what type requirements it's truly required. Because that's a lot different. I, I believe impact fees have a different criteria standard, what you have to do.
It's a very similar methodology.
Or double-check that, I would suggest that you double-check that before you can just implement. Because we currently do not have a county impact fee. There's a school board impact fee, we don't have an impact fee at all. And to initiate one now, I think there's some different steps that have to be done. So please just confirm and check that, okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, just to answer that question, we have, we've had that conversation with Rich. We've actually had the conversation with the company that prepares the special assessment methodology. That is a service that they offer as well. They were not able to provide us a quote at this time on the, be able to do that service because their schedule was simply booked out too far for them to realistically provide a number. However, I will reach out to them again to see if that's something that we could at least get a rough estimates from them. So that when we have those conversations, we would know exactly, you know, at least a ballpark number that we can work towards. While the methodology is not the same, it's a very similar process. And they are, they are, they have the ability to do that as well.
I would like to add to that real quick. I think, if I recall, I think I was in high school in two thousand eight. But I think we had it in two thousand eight and then the commissioners tabled it at that time and said it to zero. And then the school board, that was, that was during the economic crisis, but the school board could not table it. I think they had to keep it at the twenty-five hundred, I think that was state mandated.
It may have been.
It may have been, I'm just trying to give a little recap on it. And to this date, we have not done anything with it. And same thing with the fire assessment, if we were to adjust it at all, we would have to do the study, the whole nine yards in order for it to be official. So I agree with, you know, looking into it for sure.
I can give you some background. We tabled it in two thousand for the simple fact that all, it was brought up as an impact fee because half of Baker County was gonna be developed with DRIs, if y'all can remember the.
Cedar Creek DRI, a whole massive development.
Now we're talking now. So at that point.
I was at the state negotiating that DRI.
There was a impact fee put because it was gonna be over, I think, five thousand homes.
Yep.
Is what they was talking about. So at that point, that all fell through. The economy crashed, everything went flat. And then we still had this high impact fee. And then we couldn't get any houses built in here, built in here in Baker County. Our kids couldn't even build houses because they were spending seven or eight thousand dollars in impact fees just to start their house and they, they even broke ground. So that's the reason it went away. And so we could build here in Baker County again. But now we're in a stage where we're looking at a lot of developments coming back in and people wanting to build three, four hundred, five hundred homes. So I think it's time to look at it again. But I can just tell you the reason it was tabled was for the simple fact, my younger couldn't afford seven thousand dollars in impact fees and then buy the property, build a house. Your younger couldn't either, but it was, the college was terrible.
That's right. And I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not bashing, I, I was just, we're talking seventeen years ago, just trying to give a recap of the past seventeen years, kinda.
You was recapping, but you weren't recapping why.
That's right. There we go, there we go, I appreciate that.
But I, I agree, it's, it's like anything else, I mean, you need to revisit it, look at it and see what makes sense. And even if they come up with a number with the survey, you don't have to go with the number they picked, you could cut that number in half. So if they come in and say you can charge a four thousand dollar impact fee, you don't mean you got to charge the four thousand, you can charge two thousand. So you got, you got to be reasonable.
Sure. Okay.
We don't want to by any means discourage growth. You could go to St. John's County and pay twenty thousand dollars if you want.
Right.
Or forty.
Or forty now.
That's high.
That's the reason I live in Baker County. I love Baker County and we need to protect Baker County. But I agree with Commissioner Mann, it's something we need to at least look into. I see a lot of subdivisions trying to come in.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a real balancing act to be done with that, which is, makes it tough. Because while the intended target audience is new developments.
It still affects you.
It impacts everybody here, it impacts the families here that their, their kid wants to put in a mobile home. It impacts, you know, that, that can't afford to build a house. Look, I'd love to say that everybody can build a house, but that's not the reality. We have a lot of, a lot of residents here. Look, I got family members that, that's, I lived in a mobile home, I'm not knocking it at all. I'm simply saying it's, when you start, if you're not careful with balancing that, it creates a situation where it makes it very difficult for them to be able to get on their own. So that's why we have to think about it. I know what our target audience is and what we'd love to be able to target, but that's not the way it works. And so we have to think about, that's part of the balancing act, when we get numbers and suggestions and ideas to think about.
I agree. Any other comments on that, Mr. Mann?
I'm good, we're done.
Commissioner Bennett?
Two items, speaking of growth. I, we continue to have some conversations with Plant AS, very positive things. They have submitted civil drawings and site grading plans worked for the county. The county has been reviewing it. Our Tarbuck Senatoring, Troy, has reviewed it and I think provided some comments back to date. Of course, they follow in the process that we've asked them to do, where they have licensed Florida engineers sign and seal all the documents, which is required. But also they're outside permitting to ensure and sign off that it meets all permitting requirements. So our permits department isn't have, does not have to go through all them final details that we would normally do so, though we have somebody doing that. And so that is coming, they're about to make a couple more submittals tomorrow. I'm understanding that you'll see, receive packages tomorrow. I have asked staff to please take a look at it and try to expedite that, to get it responded back just as quickly as possible because they are at the last step to be able to issue well over three hundred-some million dollars in bonds to move this thing forward. It is a huge one. And this is, keep in mind, this is creating jobs for people here. It's creating a tremendous amount of capital investment here in the county in an area that is not impacted by roads, it's not impacted by, so it's a huge benefit. And so if you recall, we did do a rev grant, which rebates, after they pay, rebates seventy-five percent of their revenues for the first ten years. People look at that as we losing revenue. I don't. I look at, we get twenty-five percent of a big number that we weren't getting anywhere for ten years. And at the end of ten years, we getting a much bigger number. So it's a tremendous opportunity here for the county. So I'm encouraged that it continues to make its way through the process. And so I've asked, I wanted them to please work as, as much as they can to expedite that review, to get that information back so they can continue to proceed. So that's, I think that's really a positive thing for the county. My other one is the midpoint Parkway, speaking of new developments. You know, it's got a tire mixed-use type, it's got residential, it's got commercial, as well as it has industrial side on it as well. And as you recall, there was a lot of discussions about whether this would be a city project or not, and the city provided water and sewer. Bend down that path, that's not gonna be the case. So they are prepared to begin, to come have a dialogue with the county. And so I did have a meeting with the developers and their team, along with DOT, this past Monday to help coordinate that conversation and discussion of what's gonna be needed and who, and what's happening. I know the Department of Transportation has issued a, and selected a consultant to do some work to see what needs to be done at the two twenty-eight interchange there, between the interchange out to the entrance end of Farver Road to what has, what will need to be done there, so that can be considered as part when the development comes. They also are looking at the opposite end, for making the connection over to US ninety. And they've been reviewing different options for that, a little bit different than what we talked about. But it is still, that will be shared as well, when, as well, I'll be able to share that. But I'm, I've asked the, the team to come next meeting. This board is open to it, go ahead and come and, and present the project and start having the dialogue here. I'm not sure how much you may have known about it already, so that's why I've asked them to come. It's, they did have two public meetings when it was being proposed by the, the city. But I think it's appropriate for them to come here and present here and give you guys an opportunity to ask questions directly, express concerns and things like that from the onset. So we'd be prepared to, to begin that and have that meeting, that presentation and stuff at next meeting.
If I may have a question with that, Mr. Jim? So that's just not an actual application to discuss?
No.
Just an opening.
It's coming and presenting the project in preparation of the application and things, okay? But no, there's not a formal submittal next meeting, it is for them to come and do this and us starting to have that conversation with them, with what's gonna be submitted, when and timelines, okay? But I do know they are, are looking forward to trying to move the project forward. We've talked, and I, I go back to my campaign signs from ten years ago, ten plus, right? And it's talked about smart growth. And this to me is what I consider smart growth. We can pretend that Baker County's not gonna grow, but that's just not realistic, it is. And I, the way I look at it is, how do we help control that? And how do we do it in a smart manner where we get in some development, we creating some jobs and opportunities here for our residents and our, our citizens here? But along the same time, we don't want to change the character that's just so important to us, is a rural nature. And so I think this helps to marry up some of that. And, and it's not all residential, it's got some commercial in it, as well as industrial and job creation. And when you, it's, in my opinion, it's much better to do one, the larger development, where you can make sure you have some way to control what's happening, or a bunch of small, individual, piecemeal projects? Because you can't extract out anything from those when you do small ones. So to me, having that whole site as one master development site, I think, makes a lot more sense than a bunch of small ones. But you guys need to see it, hear it and offer your own input and your own thoughts on it, not just mine. And so I've asked them to be prepared, I said, we're not gonna do it this meeting because nobody's had a chance to, get a preface anybody with it. So I said, wait till the next meeting, but I would at least make sure the team that was here was aware of it and make sure everybody's good with us having it on the agenda for presentation at next meeting. Okay? So Sarah, if you don't mind, please make sure we have an agenda item to, for having that discussion, okay? That's it for me.
We're gonna have a public hearing that, on our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
We'll have to on these two items. Let's make sure it's closer to the end of the agenda items because it's gonna be a long process and I don't want to have to cut it off halfway. So it would be. Okay?
Yes, sir.
So it's most likely after the public hearing?
Yes.
So that way.
It won't never.
And I think that's good because it gives the opportunity, if the public wants to come as well, it's, they're not trying to, they have time to be here from, from work and things. So I think that, that will work fine.
It's, it's served dual purpose. Okay?
I've, yeah, I'm jumping.
I've, uh, yeah, I'm jumping.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir. That's it for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Here we go. Um, one of the things I've, I've spoke about in the past, I mean, I wanna say the past couple, but I've spoken about it here lately, are the water sewer details that we're, we're looking at. I've had a couple of conversations with, uh, some, some people with JA, CCUA. Uh, CCUA, if you don't, are not familiar with it, Clay County Utility Authority, JA, as, as far as their details and their specs. Um, I would look to try to see if we can maybe get a committee started or get the board's thoughts on how to update our standards to today's current things. Where both Commissioner Mann spoke about impact fees and the developments coming. Commissioner Bennett, the same with, you know, with midpoint Parkway. If midpoint Parkway comes, that would fall under the county's, you know, juris-diction at that point, correct? And then, the water sewer would be the county, not the city.
No, so to be clear, and we can have this conversation, we would be roadway. The, the utilities and things, we're not gonna take ownership or responsibility in any way, shape, fashion or form for owning, operating, maintaining a sewer system. That would be private, help be done privately. The standards by which it is to be done, I think, it really, is a good topic to have discussion, make sure we have it done to the standards that we need. But there's no intention for Baker County.
To own.
To own, operate, maintain that. That would have to be done in a private setting.
Sure. It, but.
The standards are what it's designed to and things, I think, is.
Yes. It would be a good, a good topic. And I would think that it would be, you know, reasonable to bring in a, a committee to try to put that together. Um, I'm, I'm not sure how to update them just typically, but I, I think a committee would be a good idea, uh, maybe to, to reach out to a couple and, and try to bring somebody together to update our standards for the county. So.
Those standards were developed in 2008.
I think four.
Four, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
Is that a committee you're gonna be willing to chair? You can, you can chair the committee and then.
I think I heard you say you would.
I think that's what he said.
I think I had him busy.
Do what?
I got you busy.
There we go.
Well, he's fixing to take on the dual roles, so.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's something we need to look at. And I mean, I don't mind. I, I might know a thing or two about it, so.
And, and you're supposed to develop that utility centers. We actually had a company that the county hired to, to do that. But I, I agree. They've gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, start somewhere and just take the, the step forward, you know, so.
Right.
Preparing for the future.
Well, let's, uh, you and staff work on some type of a plan, which way y'all wanna handle it and then present, but get it back to the board next meeting and we can have that discussion along with the development. On which way you wanna approach it, by hiring in someone or setting up your own committee.
Fine, too.
But y'all work on that.
Okay.
And then, if you'll get that information back to the board, we can have discussions on it.
We will. Sounds good.
Yeah, I just, my cautions, I just don't wanna grab somebody like JEAs and say, this is what we're gonna do.
Right.
Lord mercy, we're not JEAs. We don't wanna be JEAs. We just gotta make sure that what we're doing is right for us. But I think your point is, let's take a look at it.
Same thing with CCUA. I mean, both, all, all have good and flaws.
Let's find the right.
But let's, let's find the, the, the best thing for Baker County, right? So, that's, that's something I should look at.
I know that city's doing one out here right now, a, a big sewer system, brand new.
That's right. So, I mean, you, you look at everybody surrounding us. We're all dealing with the same soils, the same, uh, terrain, you know what I mean? So, we, we all come together and find what's best for us. So. That's all I have.
Anything else? And I don't have anything. I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.